I won't even get my wife.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November the third Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. George Laurie if he'll come forward with that invocation. Well, George, as always, thank you for being here.
Sure, you're welcome. All right. Commissioners, guests, want to again thank the Dare County Commissioners for allowing members of the North Year Ministers Association to open each of the meetings with a prayer. Three years ago, I chose to give the opening prayer in the middle of the Jewish High Holidays, almost deja vu. I missed my October date, which was just after the end of the Jewish High Holidays, so I'm glad I have the opportunity to be here this year, albeit a month late. I feel fortunate that our God chose to seal us, seal all of you in the Book of Life for last year, and I pray that God will do so again for the upcoming Jewish New Year. On Rosh Hashanah, we are reminded that all humans have the ability to exercise free will, that is, to make good choices and bad choices are perhaps the best available choice. Ten days later, at the conclusion of Yom Kippur, we see that we have been given the chance to make amends with those we have striven against. We are reminded that repentance, prayer, and deeds of loving kindness lessen the severity of God's decree. While most of us cannot make impacts nationally or on the state level, let us strive to make positive impacts locally on our Outer Banks. So we'd like to offer the following prayer. Blessed are you, Lord our God, sovereign of all, who has given us life, sustains us, and brings us to this season. We thank you and sing your praises for our lives which are in your hand, for our souls which are in your keeping. You are goodness, you are compassion, you have always been our hope. Be with these commissioners and others who served Dare County. Guide them in their daily challenges with the issues in Dare County, such as affordable housing, dredging, our beaches and our vulnerable beach houses, our healthcare system, our educational facilities, and our potentially endangered immigrants. Soften their hearts and open their minds so that every decision they make is the best one. Humble them to realize that they are all human and make mistakes because the residents of Dare County will respect them even more. Almighty God, gracious with your light when our path grows dark, with your strength when we grow weary, and with your support when we falter and all resolve. King of the universe, you have commanded us to do your work for the betterment of the Outer Banks. May this be God's will, and all God's people say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Have a safe and blessed day.
Thank you, George. Appreciate you being here. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Free Republic of America stands one nation under God, and the physical world would never take justice for all.
County manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
All right. Thank you, county manager. As most of y'all are aware, I love to start the meeting with a little humor. The humor is, will help you get through today. I heard about this old country farmer. He was taking his nephew camping for the very first time. And his nephew had, he was a smart kid. His nephew had five degrees. And he was one of the smartest young men around. They set up their tent and, of course, after a long day of travel and setting up their tent, they fell asleep. And in the middle of the night, the farmer woke up his nephew and he said, "Son," he said, "look up. What do you see?" Well, the nephew immediately said, "Well, I see millions of stars." And the farmer said, "I know that, but what does that tell you?" Well, this young man, he's smart as he is, and he said astronomically, "It tells me there's billions of galaxies." And he said meteorologically, "It tells me it's gonna be a beautiful day." And he said, "Theologically, it tells me God is a great creator." And he said, looked at his uncle and he said, "Well, what does that tell you?" The old farmer said, "Son," he said, "it tells me somebody stole our tent." We're fortunate to have with us today Kevin Leonard, NACO general manager. Kevin, thank you for being here with us today. We also have our former vice chairman, Wally Overman, is with us. And we also have a former Board of Education Commissioner, Susan Bothwell, with us this morning. So thank you all for being here today. Speaking of young men, Tony Lamb is here with his grandson, Ian Lamboff, and he's very interested in government operations. And he'll be entering UNC Wilmington in January. And he's, like I said, his interest is government operations. So they're with us here this morning. Y'all stand up. Thank you for being here with us this morning. And good luck to UNC Wilmington. The, as a veteran, this is a very important day for me and my fellow veterans. On November the 11th, Tuesday, is Veterans Day. Just tomorrow, the 4th through the 11th, is Operation Green Light here in Dare County. And that is to recognize our veterans for their service to our country. And that'll last from November the 4th through the 11th. And everybody is encouraged to change their light bulb on their front porch or whatever to green and let that run. I know we'll have that here in our government facilities from the 4th through the 11th, just recognizing our veterans in the service to our country. So just keep those dates in mind. And we look forward to recognizing them. For my fellow commissioners on the board up here today, the audience, you're not aware of this, but there's a clock in the back of the room. It is not 10:20, it is 9:20. So that clock has not been reset yet. So just wanted you guys to know that we weren't an hour running behind time. And then, last but not least, I'd like to present a resolution to the board under my chairman's comments for your approval. And it's a resolution to honor Murray Helen Goodlow Murphy on her 80th birthday and recognizing her as a Dare County ambassador. I know this is my 13th year on the board, 11th year as chair. I still have three more years left in this term, but Murray Helen's been here all of the length of time that I've been here. She's been doing this some 30-plus years. But let me read this, and each of you should have a copy of it in front of you, and I'd like to ask for your approval. It's, "Whereas Murray Helen Goodlow Murphy has dedicated decades of her life to improving the quality of life for residents and visitors of Hatteras Island. And whereas Murray Helen and her late husband, the Reverend Tom Murphy, moved permanent to the Outer Banks in 1986 after years of vacationing here and began their community service with the local volunteer fire department, serving for more than a decade." Let me interject something here before I finish this. Tom Murphy, incredible human being, dedicated Democrat. And we're gonna talk a little bit of politics right now. I was elected in 2012. 2014 became the chairman, first Republican chairman since 1986 and '87. It's only been twice in a hundred and some years that we've been a county that Mikey Daniels, '86, '87. It's only that one time that a Republican was chair. And I have to remember this, and I laugh about it. But Tom sat right there on the front row the very first day that I was sworn in as chair. And we had public comment, and Tom got up, and he stood up and he looked at all of us. And most of us, majority of us were Republican up here. I think Danny was here as the only Democrat. And Tom straight up said, "I don't trust you guys." Stood right there and probably said, "I don't trust none of you." Months and months went by, year went by, two or three years went by. And after a lot of things that we have done, and we have done, this board has done tremendous things for this county in the last 12, 14 years. Tom came up to me after a meeting, and it'd been a year or more. He put his arm around me, stuck his hand out. He said, "Bob, you proved me wrong. Your board proved me wrong." He said, "I could not be more proud of what this board's done for Dare County." So Murray Helen, I think of Tom quite often, not for that reason, but for the honest, upfront individual human being that he was. He truly cared for Dare County as much as you do. And I appreciate you allowing me to share that moment. Whereas since 1980, Murray Helen has served as a reporter for the Coastal and Times, covering Dare County issues and events with families with accuracy and dedication, helping to keep residents informed and connected to their local government and community. And whereas through her grant writing and advocacy, Murray Helen helped bring new pathways and community amenities to Hatteras Island and continues to champion projects for the public good. And whereas she also founded the Outer Banks Hotline Thrift Shop in Rodanthe in 1987, which continues to raise funds for the fire department and local domestic violence hotline. And whereas Murray Helen was instrumental in establishing Radio Hatteras and all volunteer community radio station that provides vital information during hurricanes and emergencies and serves as an important resource for the island. Whereas Murray Helen Goodlow Murphy has been recognized with numerous awards for her service, including Dare County Citizen of the Year, Outer Banks Citizen of the Year, membership in the prestigious Order of the Longleaf Pine and the North Carolina Coastal Federation Pelican Award. And whereas on this occasion of her 80th birthday, Dare County wishes to formally recognize and thank Murray Helen Goodlow Murphy for her extraordinary dedication to the residents of Hatteras Island and her ongoing contributions to the entire county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor Murray Helen Goodlow Murphy on the occasion of her 80th birthday and recognizes her as an enduring Dare County ambassador whose leadership, vision, and selfless services have made a lasting difference in the lives of countless residents and visitors. Adopted this third day of November 2025, and it's signed by myself, the chairman of Dare County Board of Commissioners. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I think you filed that motion when you read that resolution, and I will second that motion on your behalf.
Thank you very much, Vice Chairman. Is there any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, Sigma Phi saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We were worried about her this morning.
That's right.
Because Murray Ellen said she was running 30 minutes behind because of NC-12. That seems like that's the story of our lives anymore, doesn't it, Murray Ellen? This is a copy of that resolution, and we certainly appreciate you. County manager, that completes my chairman's comments. Oh, excuse me. I do have one more thing, sorry. September 27, Governor Stein issued a state of emergency for us with all the things that are happening in Buxton over these last 60 days. And as you know, emergency declarations last for about 30 days unless he reinstates them. And there's been some subject matter with relationship to folks not understanding what a governor's state of emergency means. We've stated that numerous times, but sometimes you gotta tell them what you told them, then you gotta tell them what you told them. So we're gonna tell them what we told them. And I've asked the county manager to explain what our limits are and what we can and cannot do when a governor issues a state of emergency. Can it turn to the county manager?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are three entities that can issue states of emergency. The president can do a presidential declaration. That's typically done in a large-scale event like a large hurricane. We've had declarations here that triggers federal aid, public assistance. When I say public assistance, I mean assistance to the local government. It also triggers recovery stuff, but you have to have a level of damage and you have to have a presidential declaration. We've had neither of those with the events that we've had over the last couple of months. So the presidential side is not involved in this discussion. The state of North Carolina and the local government can also declare states of emergency. So let's talk about what North Carolina does. The governor can declare a state of emergency, and again, he can do it for things like storms, natural disasters, man-made things. If there was a big technology breakdown, the whole internet and the whole state went down, or something crazy like happened. or something crazy like happened, you know, a public health crisis like the pandemic that we had, supply chain disruptions. There's lots of things that could happen in a state that would trigger a state of emergency. So what happens when you have one of those events? The chairman just told you the governor did that back in September when we had Aaron come through. And that was one of those events that he got the authority to do it. And he did declare that state of emergency. What does that do for us? We've gotten lots of calls, why don't they call a state of emergency? Why don't they call a state of emergency? The idea being that they're thinking that if we have a state of emergency, that all of a sudden money starts flowing and they can move their houses or clean up their debris or do whatever needs to be done. And that's really not what the state of emergency does. The purpose of the state of emergency is to protect the public safety, and it makes resources available to the local governments. Water, food, trucks, gas, state resources, things that we can do, public assistance that we can do at the local government level to, to make things better and to protect public safety. You know, it, it can weigh, right? They typically in a hurricane, they weigh the weight limits on the road so that we can bring in the heavy equipment that we need to clean up, that kind of thing. You know, if somebody's price gouging, they have rules they can go in and stop the price gouging. There's restrictions they can place on travel. They can close roads, they can have curfews, they can do things like that. But there's nothing in the state of emergency that's issued by the governor that creates individual assistance to an individual property owner unless the level of damages exceeds some threshold. And then there's things they can do for public, for individual assistance to try to help families, you know, get out of the situation that they're in. Like out west, a lot of that's going on now. But we don't have near the threshold to get to that. And so any state of emergency that's issued now is simply to make resources available to us. Well, in the situation that we have, we, there's no resources that the county needs. And if we did, we could get them. If we needed helicopters, if we needed bigger trucks, if we needed whatever, we could get that stuff. And we would if we needed to do that. So the thought that somehow a state of emergency is going to come in and create pot of money for individual people to use in these situations that we've had over the last month, that's, that isn't how that works. I've talked about curfews, travel evacuations, all those kind of things. You know, the county can do similar. The county can issue state of emergency. That's also, again, to protect public safety. When we do that, it gives us the authority to close roads, to have curfews, to do other restrictive measures to protect public safety while we're recovering from whatever the event is that triggered the state of emergency. So I think that's the message we've been trying to get out to people because we keep getting asked, why don't you do a state of emergency? Well, we haven't needed to do that. We, we've been able to do the things that we do. And, you know, the state has a state of emergency they issued back in Aaron. And if we needed a state of resources, we can get them. And so that's as far as it goes. Does that answer?
Yes, sir. I, I, I just wanted us to reiterate that for those that we, we all have received comments and requests via emails, text, telephone calls, that we needed to issue a state of emergency. And I just wanted to clarify what, what that does for us so that hopefully the public will understand that this morning through our meeting and our meeting. But thank you for doing that, county manager. Have one other item, and that is, I'm sure most of you are aware that I formed a coastal counties fishing coalition. This will be, this will be our third meeting that we'll, we'll have this coming Wednesday at 1 o'clock in Carteret County that involves almost, well, it's actually 19 coastal counties that I requested this of my fellow chairman of those county boards to participate after the trawling situation in Raleigh that occurred in the Senate with respects to banning trawlers in our county. I mean, in our, in our waterways, in our coastal. It couldn't take, couldn't take any, thank you, Carson. Carson and I were coming home from that meeting, and I mentioned that to him. And so everybody's joined that, and I'm looking forward to this meeting. This will be our third meeting. We'll have a resolution on, on a couple of items. Vice, Vice Chairman, House will be presenting one with respects to, to resolution opposing the proposed blue crab harvest restrictions. And we'll look at that today. I'll take that to our board meeting Wednesday in Carteret and ask for the coalition to support that. The reason I wanted to form this coalition is we wanted one voice. And with 20 counties, that's about a fifth of the state that has a, a voice, and, and we want a unified voice. We're hoping that that, those number of counties and that one voice will wake up our legislators. I don't know if it had any other way to say this, folks, other than the simple fact is the state legislature is trying to shut down the oldest profession of mankind. And they're doing a pretty good job of it here in Dare County. And we're not going to allow it. We're going to fight it, and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to keep our fishermen working. And we're going to do everything we can to support them. And we had, we had a great win in Raleigh over that, over that trawl ban in our intercoastal waterway. So we'll, we'll continue. I, I don't know about you, but I want to eat, I want to eat local seafood. Look, look at what happened recently. Anybody bought any Walmart shrimp lately? God help you. Yeah, I certainly don't and won't. I'm going to eat local, local seafood.
It was sourced from Indonesia is where that was sourced.
Yeah, but Walmart sold it. And I want to eat fresh seafood and shrimp, whatever, from our local waters. Our local waters are clean. And so we're going to fight, just like we have always done for our commercial fishermen. I mean, we, we were able to fight to open up the waterways so they can go to work. For so many years, they couldn't go to work. And we were able to do a public-private partnership to, to build the dredge so that now that our fishermen can actually go to work in Hatteras and Oregon Island. So we're going to continue to do that. Shrimp ban, they said, well, they can shrimp offshore. They don't realize these folks, shrimpers that shrimp in the intercoastal, those, those trawlers are 30 to 50 feet long. They can't go in the ocean every single day. They got to make their living inside. So we're going to fight, and we'll continue to do that. And we'll bring this resolution, crab resolution here a little bit later under Commissioner, Vice Chairman's business. And we'll take that to Morehead City, to Carteret. And, and our coalition will continue to, to speak as one voice. And, and we're going to lobby the rest of our state as well because quite frankly, I don't, I don't believe our legislators in other parts of the state really understand what we go through here for our commercial fishermen. So we're going to lobby those, ask some of them to join us. And hopefully we can turn this attitude in the state legislature around. So with that being said, county manager, I think now I'm finished with chairman's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item two on our agenda. That's the presentation of our service pins. We have two this morning. First, Michael Elliott's here to receive his 10-year pin from Jose Wilson.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. That's not what I was looking for there. So this morning, I have the distinct honor of presenting Michael his 10-year pin. And if y'all remember, at last month's meeting, I received mine. So Michael was the first hire I was involved in with Dare County. And obviously, he's made it 10 years. And so I feel very successful that we, we made that hire, and, and I'm proud. And, and I think Michael has taken, I don't think, I know he's taken that opportunity, and he has run with it, and he has done an exceptional job through these 10 years. Michael's a graduate of East Carolina. He's recently out of MBA school when he came, when he came and interviewed with us for a personal property appraiser job. Michael was hired. He held that position for roughly three years. And then we had a, a position in the office resign, which was the office manager position. And Michael applied for that position, and, and he, he got that. And in, in the same time, he was continuing to do the work of his prior job. And over the years, that office manager position is involved in everything in our department. And it is a wonderful way to learn about how everything works in land records and property tax. And he has exemplified a desire to learn every part of that, of, of what we do. And, and that's really what has set him apart in his, in his quest for professional development. And, and so about three years ago, we decided we needed to, we needed a manager for all of our personal property. So we, we morphed that position of the office manager into the personal property manager. And that position is responsible for the listing, appraisal, and assessment of all individual personal property and business personal property in the county. Just for perspective purposes, we have roughly 10,000 boats. We have roughly 10,000 rental properties. We have 3,300 business accounts. So he has, he has quite a bit on his plate in conjunction with the office manager role that he maintains at the same time. So that in itself is enough to keep him very busy. Just in the past couple of years, we had another retirement, a longtime employee retire who was responsible for our exemptions program. And we, we tasked Michael with that. And he, he manages that entire process for our county as well and, and does a great job with that. He's certified by Department of Revenue. He's a level-one real estate appraiser and personal property appraiser. He is a personal property specialist candidate for professional designation for IAAO. He's on track to complete that this year. The revow kind of has a tendency to sidetrack these things, and, and I understand that. So I'm the incoming president for our statewide association, which means the last few years, four years, I've been very involved with all types of, of what our association does in various roles through the officers. And Michael has been very involved in a newly formed committee, the Personal Property Advisory Committee. They've been, I believe it was formed two years ago. And he helps teach personal property that appraisers will take at conferences and educational offerings across the state. So he is, he's helping to assist others in that respect as well. And, and there's a lot to be said with that. Involvement is key to what we do, and he's just been doing that since day one. He really, his potential is limitless. He's going to go a long way, there's no question. He's, he's relatively young, unlike myself. But I couldn't, I could sit up here and talk all day about how good of a job he does. He, outside of work, he, he and his wife Chloe have twin boys that are 14 months old. I have twin boys, they're 23. So I, I at times will offer advice in, in a humorous fashion. And I have quite, quite a good time with that. And hopefully can impart some knowledge on that, on that end. But they, they keep him very busy, as you can imagine. Just a few things I'd like to read from coworkers that, that kind of basically emphasize what I've been saying. "It has been a pleasure to serve under a patient and encouraging manager whose steady approach has helped our team serve the community well. We appreciate his commitment and the example he sets each day. When I have asked for his assistance, he is always very willing to assist and does it with a great attitude. Michael has been very helpful to the technically challenged people like myself." And I did not write that, but I fit in that category as well. So that, that's a good thing. Michael, he comes from a long line of local government service. His grandfather was the Public Works Director, I don't know how long ago that was, but for Dare County, and did retire from the county. His great uncle served as county commissioner, and that is Max Dutton, who some of you may be familiar with. And his mother just retired from the town of Kill Devil Hills after 38 years of service. So he's got a few more years, 28, I think, is with mom. But congratulations, Michael.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next, we have Brendan Lindsey. He's to receive his 10-year pin from Jenny Collins.
Good morning. Let me introduce Brendan Lindsey, who's a paramedic with the EMS department here. Brendan, like many EMS folks, got a start in ocean rescue, where he was with, next had ocean rescue starting in 2012 through 2016. And then he went to the town of Kitty Hawk Ocean Rescue for a year following that. And a lot of the lifeguards figure out that when they're on the beach and they're rescuing folks, they interact with EMS a lot. And that usually spurs an interest in those types of fields. And so Brendan also has a mother who was an EMT in her past. And so he kind of got doubled whammy with it there. And he attended COA and got his EMT in 2014. We hired him as a part-time EMT in August of 2015 and then got him onboard full-time in November of 2016. So we have watched Brendan grow up from the kid who wasn't very confident, who showed up in a Pokemon t-shirt and running shorts that were about two sizes too small for him, to the man he is today. He just recently got married. Brendan is assigned to Dare Med Flight where he's, he got his paramedic and actually, let's see, Lenore in 2019. And worked on the ground ambulances for several years and then been on Med Flight for about a year as a paramedic with us. And he also helps us teach in our continuing education program. So Brendan, here is, for 10 years of service with the county, we look forward to many more, and no more Pokemon t-shirts.
No more. We, we do not have an employee of the month this month, and so we'll move on to public comment. Before we go to public comment, if you received an award this morning, please go right out through this door with Caitlin to have a picture made. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning, raise your hand and I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a light up on the podium that'll come on. It's green when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. I have two on the sign-up sheet. First, I have Sandra Burge.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to share this information with you this morning. My name is Sandra Burge. I live in Kill Devil Hills and am a member of the Dare County Older Adult Services Advisory Council. And on their behalf, I'm here to invite the public to attend a Community Resource Fair focused on connecting our older adults, their family members, and their caregivers who may be searching for assistance with a wide variety of services that are available in Dare County. The date for this event, and I believe you have a blue card in front of you, yep, thank you, save the date, indicates that this will be held on Saturday, November 15, 2025. The time is 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The location is the Dare County Youth Center at the Family Recreation Park. And that's on Mustian Street in Kill Devil Hills. The purpose of this is to connect our citizens, both older citizens and their family members, with over 45 organizations and service providers and community leaders providing valuable information. We want them to explore the essential resources. And they are focused on healthcare, wellness, nutrition, enjoyable activities, and technology assistance. This is not designed for the ill elderly. It's, it's designed for all people in that age group and their family members who may be facing struggles in being a caregiver. We hope they learn to stay active and informed and engaged in their life. This event is free and open to the public. I would like to also notice that there are many new older folks that have moved to this county since COVID. I can tell that in my church and when I go buy groceries, et cetera. So, these folks, if they age in place, as we call it, then they will continue to need services as the years go on. We want those services to be not only available, but recognizable by their family, their caregivers, et cetera. Also in front of you, looks like this, is a proclamation from Governor Josh Stein. And I think it's timely that this comes at this time of year, after we've been working for two years to put on this resource fair. It notes the number of families that are caregivers, how many grandparents are taking care of their grandchildren, the different circumstances that caregivers face, the access and use support and acknowledge respite services. And so, it ends with, whereas the state of North Carolina encourages people to recognize and support family, friends, and neighbors who help those who are aging or have disabilities because of doing so is the right thing to do and an essential investment in a better future for North Carolina's older adults and people with disabilities. Now, therefore, I, Josh Stein, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Family Caregiver Month. Thank you very much, and I hope to see some of you at the fair greeting those older adults who will be seeking services. Thank you.
Those first two wheres is incredible.
Incredible numbers.
80,000 North Carolina grandparents are responsible for, for grandchildren in, in the state of North Carolina, 80,000. And 1.2 million caregivers providing 1.2 billion hours of unpaid family members and friends. It is incredible numbers. Thank you for pointing that out to us. And thank you for this resolution. And thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have Christina Boyd.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Boyd.
Good morning, Chairman Woodard, Commissioners and members of the Dare County community. My name is Christina Drum Boyd, and I'm here today as a property owner, resident, and year-round advocate, and someone who deeply loves and cares for Hatteras Island, its residents, its visitors, and its future. Every person in this room knows that Highway 12 is our lifeline, the only route connecting residents and visitors to hospitals, schools, and emergency services. And yet, every few weeks, that lifeline is buried, breached, or broken between P Island and Buxton. Each time, NC DOT rolls in with heavy equipment to push the sand aside, and each time, we destroy the very dunes and beach systems meant to protect us. We are trapped in an endless loop of temporary fixes, expensive, destructive, and short-sighted. The 2013 Dare County Shoreline Management feasibility study made this clear over a decade ago. It identified semi-permeable groynes paired with beach nourishment and monitoring as the most effective and sustainable strategy for shoreline stability. Those measures could have extended protection by decades and reduced the endless cycle of emergency sand removal, yet they were never implemented. Under GS 113A through 115.1 within the Coastal Area Management Act, North Carolina law allows engineered shoreline structures when public infrastructure is threatened by erosion. Highway 12 already meets the standard. It's legally classified and published local government documents as a critical lifeline. The pathway exists, the laws allow it. What's missing is the will to act. Meanwhile, erosion has accelerated in Buxton as decaying remnants of the old groynes at the former FUDS military site have disrupted sediment flow, intensifying scouring, and collapse. What was once a stable shoreline has become a catastrophic hotspot, predictable and preventable. The only thing standing in the way of long-term protection is not the law. It's the unwillingness to apply it. The 2013 study estimated a long-term stabilization cost of 28 to 55 million. By comparison, over 72 million has already been spent since 2010 just to keep the same road temporarily passable. Permeable groynes are not seawalls. They're modern sand-sharing structures designed to work with natural forces, engineered, monitored, and reversible. They reduce erosion, not increase it. In contrast, the constant sand pushing may be technically compliant, but it violates the intent of KAMA. It is not preservation. It is, in fact, erosion disguised as maintenance. So, today, I'm asking the Dare County Board of Commissioners to do what the state has not yet done, apply the law consistently and courageously. I respectfully request that you adopt a resolution recognizing Highway 12 as critical public infrastructure, qualifying for protection under Section 113A through 115.1. Petition NC DOT, NC DEQ, and DCM to initiate a permeable groin pilot project at identified erosion hotspots. Convene an inter-agency task force, including DOT, CRC, DCM, and the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Park Service to complete design scoping within 60 days. This is a clear lawful path, one that builds resilience, protects the environment, and uses taxpayer dollars responsibly. Let us stop managing Highway 12 by crisis and start managing it by principle. Let us use the exception that already exists written into North Carolina law, the one designed for exactly this kind of situation, and give this island the protection it deserves. This is not about walls. It's about willpower. We don't need another study. We don't need temporary state of emergency. We need action. If we can get emergency permits every few weeks to scrape the sand off the highway, then we can surely get one permit to stabilize it the right way, one project, one act of leadership that ends decades of costly repetition. Every storm that hits the island erodes more sand. It now erodes public trust, and to ignore lawful remedy is to invite unnecessary consequences. To act within the law is to protect our coastline, our residents, and your legacy as leaders. I'm asking you to not just listen, but to lead. Adopt the resolution, direct the petition, form the task force, and move this county from reaction to responsibility. Because failure to act when the law allows you to act is no longer defensible. Thank you for your time, your service, and your willingness to choose principle over politics.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Any other public comment this morning? Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Any public comment in Buxton?
Yes. First, we have Betsy Quinn.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Quinn.
My name is Betsy Quinn. I live in Buxton on Old Lighthouse Road. I'm also a property owner of several properties on Ocean Drive. My rental house that was four lots back from the ocean is now oceanfront, and I fully expect major damage in the near future. First of all, I would like to thank you all for, are they there? Yes. I can't see you, I'm sorry. First of all, I would thank you all for what you've done for Buxton over the past several months, the FUDS project, moving the timeline ahead. There you are. Moving the timeline ahead for the beach nourishment, and of course, the jetty project. I wish I could say jetties, but we are grateful for what we can get. But I think we can all agree that no matter what anyone and everyone has done, it has not been enough. I'm here today to speak about my observations with the cleanup process. When the first house went down in the middle of September, the debris did not spread very far on land, and the private contractor was able to go up and go in immediately and clean it up. Two weeks later, when we lost nine houses, that was a different story. I'd like to say, yes, the private contractors did an incredible job with what they had to do. But there did not appear to be anyone overseeing the project, and so, some areas got overlooked. There were two streets that still had debris on them when the contractors were done. Fortunately, the Buxton Sufficacy Association addressed this. They were able to gather volunteers, and those streets were cleaned up the day before another storm. And then, the county came out with this statement that because of the financial concerns, future debris removal would be left up to the homeowners. And then, we, we lost five more houses. With the incredible amount of water that flowed, that debris went everywhere. It is all down on Lighthouse Road. It is on just about every property. I can say with 100% certainty, it has been on every property on Ocean Drive. Because of the county stance, the non-resident property owners believe that the contractors hired by the homeowners of the fallen houses are going to clean up their debris. The debris is in bushes, it's under houses, it's between houses, and the private contractors can't go on this property without permission from the owners. The owners don't know that. The owners don't know, even if they do know, they don't know who to give permission to because they don't know who the contractors are. It is a circus without a ringleader. With a project of this magnitude, there needs to be someone in charge. Now, there may be, but none of us know who it is. On Friday afternoon, I spoke with three county workers and one contractor, and none of them could definitively tell me who was in charge of the effort. Additionally, this is going to happen again. There are houses that are leaning, there are houses with broken pilings, and there are houses that are missing pilings. We need to be planning ahead. Now, I know every storm is different, but I think somebody could sit down and say, if this happens, then we do this. If this happens, then we do this. At the very least, those of us who live here need to be assured that the county will send down a large dumpster that we can put the debris from our yards in. Because the transfer station here is not going to take the amount of debris that comes from these houses that fall into our yard. Henry Ford said, "Don't find fault, find a remedy." I believe a remedy is to have someone in charge of the project, preferably someone here with boots on the ground who knows the contractors, who knows the area, and who doesn't get stuck on the other side of the bridge. I also believe that we need to be planning for the future. Now, the contractor that I spoke with on Friday afternoon totally concurred with what I have just said. So, I do not feel like I'm off-base. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope you will take this into consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Quinn, thank you for your comments. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the county manager to respond to a couple of things that you said that might be just a little bit off-base and not quite correct. I personally, in the last 30 days, have been on Buxton, 17 of those 30 days, looking at situations, looking at what's going on, talking to our county. Just this morning, we had an issue about storm drains. They're, they're NC DOT's responsibility. NC DOT is busting their, you know what, trying to get NC 12 in Okeecoque and south of, of the bridge put back together so we can have ingress and egress off of that. I have staff right now in Buxton looking at those storm drains to see if we can help NC DOT, which is not our responsibility, but help get those storm drains cleaned. So...
And, and then crushed too. Many of the drains have been crushed.
So, right now, as we speak, we have somebody down there. I'm gonna ask the county manager to respond to a couple of things that you mentioned that not quite correct. County manager?
So, I'll take you through the process of debris removal. The first storm, the debris, the first house that fell, as you said, was a smaller storm. And we typically, we don't clean up, if your house burns down, if your house falls in, if your house comes in disrepair, it's your house, it's your property, it's your responsibility to clean that up. And we don't usually get involved in that. And so, when we have one house that falls down, then it's the owner's responsibility to clean up their property. When we have multiple houses that fall down, then we have to gauge what is our role. And the second event came down, we put dumpsters out because we thought we could manage the debris that way. And we allowed the, the property owner who cleaned off their lot to take their debris, put in our dumpster, and we hauled it away. No tipping fees, nothing like that. But it's still the owner's responsibility to get the debris off of their property. And either to the dumpsters when we place them there or take it to the landfill themselves. When we had water spread, when we had multiple houses fall down and they had co-mingled debris and all that, then that triggers the next level of debris removal. And at that point, it's still the property owner's responsibility to get the debris off of their property. We asked the property owner to bring the debris to the right-of-way, and then we've paid a contractor to go to the right-of-way and haul all of that debris away. That's what we did the last time. That's what we're doing this time. Pressure releases went out, I think on... Press releases went out, I think on Friday, Dorothy. We're giving the property owners until the 17th of November to get their debris to the right-of-way, at which time our contractor will go out there and remove that debris from the right-of-way. We don't go on the private property to clean up other people's private property. That's the private property owner's responsibility. But we do want to help, and so if they get it off their property to the right-of-way, we move it away. That process is exactly the process we follow when we have a county-wide hurricane. Exactly the same thing. The property owner's responsible to get the debris to the right-of-way, and the county then takes the responsibility to remove it off of the right-of-way. That process, that incremental approach, is what we'll follow going forward. So if one house falls down and it's not widespread, then that's gonna be a property owner issue, and the property owner needs to deal with it. That's not a county issue. We have multiple dwellings and commingled debris. Then we'll either bring in dumpsters, depending on the volume of the debris, or we'll have it put on the right-of-way, in which case we'll have our contractor haul it off. That is the process we've used in this event. That's the process that we've used in... I've been here for 11 hurricanes for 11 hurricanes. So, no different here, nothing there. We've communicated it through our social media, through all of our things. And glad to talk to anybody who has questions about it. So that's our process.
Thank you, county manager.
All right.
You said that was the 17th?
I did.
November 17th, to get it on the right-of-way for this?
We're gonna start cleaning it up, and any debris after that, we're not picking up. So don't put it down behind us, is what I'm getting at.
Right, thank you.
Other public comment from Buxton?
Yes. Brett Marley.
Brett, welcome this morning.
Morning, commissioners. Some of what I'm gonna say will just kinda be repetitive. Some of it, you know, I have a few of y'all's numbers, and we do talk, but I just like to come in and put it on public record. You know, back in, at the beginning of August, I came to y'all for the first meeting in August and told you all that Buxton was in a state of emergency without being declared one. Sadly, three months later, here we are, and 15 houses have fallen, and it's still not an area that's considered a state of emergency, regardless of situations like Ms. Betsy just shared. Regardless of situations like homeowners whose pets are getting trapped under their houses when the tide comes up too fast. Even myself included, those of us that saw it's coming never saw it being as wild as it is. I'm not sure who of y'all, or if any of y'all, have been down there the last couple days since the last storm, but... What has changed, and the reason that 15 houses in Buxton have fallen in six weeks, is that there's just nothing down there. There's nothing down there to stop the water. This is not like anything we've ever seen in the rest of our county or on the rest of the coast. This is a completely different situation. And so, no offense to, you know, y'all and Bobby's remarks as far as how the cleanup goes and how y'all handle it, but you gotta do it different. This isn't the same thing. This isn't a hurricane. You know, we understand the deal of how cleanup works after a hurricane. Everybody rallies and lends a hand. The thing is, there's a reason there's not a room full of people here. Everybody's exhausted. You know, we've spent most every week for the last two months navigating when to go get groceries because of high tide. People getting stuck on and off the island, people helping other people clean up properties. This is insane. This is no way for us to operate. And what's frustrating is, this was all preventable. You know, conversations we've had, this was preventable. The county knew in 2013 that this was coming down the pipeline at some point and did nothing. And so it's really hard to be told that, like, you know, as a property owner or a homeowner, like, oh, you need to clean up your property and get it to the side of the river. The debris isn't theirs, which, under a catastrophic one-time storm hurricane, is whatever. Just clean up your yard, everyone has their own mess. The debris isn't theirs. Some of the debris is only coming from houses that only fell because other houses fell. The houses are only falling because there's nothing there, and there was nothing done by the state, the county, or the Park Service to prevent this from happening. Like, this is absolutely insane. We're watching an entire town start washing away, and there is no... I can tell you from walking the beach there, there's no end in sight in how bad this is. As she says, she's four lots back, she's at the water's edge. Houses that were fine two weeks ago are not fine anymore. And, you know, there's refrigerators in people's yards. Like I said, the cat got stuck under the house, and a guy had to swim under the house with goggles and hold his breath to pull the cat out. There's eight-by-eights that are getting flooded 800 feet inland. Like, y'all don't understand how much water is flowing in here. It is like nothing we've seen. Because even though the houses have been on the edge of the water for years, there's been a dune between the first house and the second house. There's been a dune between the second house and the third house, and so the entire area is leveled. There's nothing to stop the water. And I think our community is just, one, exhausted. You know, being told how the cleanup's gonna go or not be cleaned up, depending on how it is. You know, being told, oh, don't put anything out there if it's after the 17th. I don't think it's exactly fair to expect an entire community that's still trying to work and live and take care of our kids to have a square mile of debris cleared up within two weeks. I think we need a little bit more grace on that. I think we need a little bit more help. I think you guys need to put more pressure on the state for help. And I know, I would like to acknowledge, I know some of y'all are fighting, and there's a lot going on behind closed doors that we don't see. I want to acknowledge that, but, yeah, this is gonna get worse. And as Ms. Betsy said, there needs to be somebody... I agree 100%. There needs to be somebody that is like heading up what's going on down there because it's an emergency situation. It is a disaster zone. And in any disaster, you have, you know, somebody that oversees it. Even if it's broken up, whatever, it's some sort of tree or people that it's organized by. But there needs to be some sort of team that's overseeing what's going on down there, planning ahead for the next storm. Because we can't just keep waking up every day and be like, okay, well, five houses fell, and now what do we do? Because homeowners that, whose houses are falling aren't answering the phone. You all know that. So you can't expect people to figure out how to clear refrigerators and stoves and eight-by-eights off of their property when they don't have the physical means. And contractors who are contracted out to clean up debris, not even knowing which debris they're supposed to pick up. Like, this is not like any other hurricane. So don't compare it to that. This is different, and it's gonna keep happening. Unless we're blessed with just another calm season, but we got that last year. We were given our grace, and it is over. So, anyway, I would encourage you guys to start brainstorming on ideas with that. I know there's people down here that would love to talk to you about that. But it needs to be done because we're just... Our little community can't do it alone, so, thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
No further comments in Buxton.
With that, we close the public comment.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, Bobby? This young lady brought up a statute that says, I believe you said that the ability for us to put hardened structures on the oceanfront to protect NC DOT highway. I've never heard of that. Can you clarify that and tell us where we're at?
There are exceptions in the rule. NC DOT, for example, in Ocracoke, in Rodanthe, they put in sandbags. They also have, in Rodanthe, they put in sheet pile. They take protective measures that they're allowed to do to protect those transportation corridors. We've had meetings with them. We're concerned, obviously, about the canal zone. We're concerned about the other hotspots down there. We've met with the Secretary of Transportation. We've met with the chairman of the Department of Transportation Board. You know, we've met with the governor. And so, they're all aware of what's going on, what's going on down there. From DOT's perspective, what we're told by them is that as long as they can push the sand off the road, then they're not gonna go in and put in hardened structures and do things like that. If the road becomes compromised and they can't move the road, then they've gotta take other measures, and it opens up other funding sources and things like that that they do. That's what DOT's told us. With respect to Highway 12 in Buxton, we've got a $45 million project that we're waiting to do because we have to wait till the spring to do it because the seas are so high that you can't do it in the winter. I was at a meeting on Thursday, and I saw one of the representatives of Great Lakes dredging, one of the largest dredging companies in the world, and asked them about doing winter beach nourishment so that we could maybe speed up that project, do something to get it out there. And he just said there's no way that they could do that in the winter. The wave heights are too large to allow their dredges to move and do what they have to do in the sand. If you recall, our contractor in the first or second project that we did in Buxton got delayed and was into October, and all of a sudden, they had to pull off, and they didn't finish the project until the spring because it couldn't work through the winter's months, and in fact, left all of their dredge pipes buried underground until into the summer, and they had to come back in and dig all that out because the seas were too high for them to operate. So, from our perspective, you know, we understand there's things that need to be done where we can do them, we have. We've got dollars budgeted, and we're doing it. Where we can't, and where we don't have funds, then we're working with the state officials to do that. I'm not sure what else to answer to those questions, but that's where we are, that's the state of things right now. I explained debris removal. The speaker is suggesting that maybe we just start going on people's private properties and cleaning them up however we think. And we don't have any authority to go do that. That's not what we have the right to do. So, again, there's responsibility for all, and we'll do our part, and the property owners have to do their part, and that's where we are.
But just for clarity, that statute does not give us, as a county, the authority to go and put hardened structures? Correct.
We can't go into the refuge at the canal zone and begin building hardened structures. We don't own any property there, we have nothing there. It's owned by the federal government, and the state has an easement right-of-way to run a road through the refuge. They have an arrangement with them that they have the right to protect the road. So they build dunes, they do the things that they do along the canal zone, for example, to protect the road. And should the road get compromised, then they'll come in and do the other things, such as sandbags, like they've done in Ocracoke, and that. They have to go through the Department of Interior to do that. That, irrespective of that statute, you can't just go on federal property and do what you want. You gotta go through them, and so they'll have to do that. The same is true down at Isabel Inlet in between Hatteras and Frisco. Where the communities are populated, where there's homes and where that, then we can do nourishment projects because we're not in the refuge then. And we've gotten permission from the Park Service, because part of that is in the park, to allow us to do that in those areas. And so, that's how the system is set up. Again, and we haven't even talked about, assuming that we could, where are we gonna pay for all this stuff? To do something in Buck, in Rodanthe, for example, is another $50 million on top of the $45 million that we're getting ready to spend in Buxton. And we haven't talked about Isabel Inlet, and we haven't talked about the canal zone in terms of nourishment and things that we can do. We have met with them about building bridges, about trying to go around these areas with bridges, much as they did in Rodanthe. And we've talked about, because, you know, to do a 10- or 15-mile bridge around something there is so expensive that unlikely we would get the funding. Can we do a series of smaller bridges? That we start with one bridge in the hottest of the hotspots and add on as funding becomes available to try to find a way to start something happening? That process is in discussion now. The division engineers are looking at that. One, to figure out where they could do that, and two, to figure out what the costs are. There's, you know, there's another place we can do cheaply. It doesn't solve all problems, but it solves one stretch there by the Visitor Center in Pea Island. They have the ability to move the road to the west side of the Pea Island Visitor Center with the erosion rate there that buys 10 years while they work it out. So there's discussions about how to get that done. That's at a price that's affordable. And so, all of these things are happening. And, you know, many of you on the board have been at those meetings. Many of you have been on those phone calls. We're doing all these things, but, you know, they work at the pace of the state. You know, the state doesn't have a budget. And so, and to the extent that federal help is needed, then they're not even up there to do their job. So, a lot of stuff coming together at the same time, but it isn't for lack of effort on your behalf or our behalf.
Bobby, I got a quick question. So you said that we don't have the ability to put anything up on the national seashore, obviously, because it's federal property. Buxton is not federal property. Buxton is private property. What about there? If somebody, if a property owner gave us permission to put in a structure, could we do it?
Well, we have easements from the property owners that we got when we did the first beach nourishment project. We also have permits from the Park Service for the area of the park that is in front of those villages, that they've authorized that as well. So we have the approvals that we need to go in and do the things that we can do there, and we have the money to do it with. So the two key elements are approvals and money, and in that case, we have both.
But we can't put a permanent structure in place?
We can't put a... Well, we are putting a permanent structure in place.
One, I'm aware of that, where we're getting to, where we're fixing. I'm completely aware of it.
And down there to hopefully stabilize that beach.
Okay.
But you can't add any new ones?
You can't add no new ones because of Kam's permanent structure ban in 1973. And even with her statute about state of emergency, we still can't do that, correct?
We can't go in and build drawings, no we can't.
Okay. That's the clarification I wanted.
Commissioner Creed, to take that further. We're dealing with this every single day. Every single day that I sit in this office, we're dealing with the state, the federal government. I mean, we had the Secretary of Transportation down here. Showed him everything from the bridge all the way to the ferry docks. Very sympathetic, very understanding. Two days later, we get a notice he's retiring. Now we gotta do this all over again for the latest Secretary of Transportation. We invited him down here. We finally, we have finally got an ear to listen to us, who is chairman of the North Carolina Transportation Board, that's very, very concerned about this. We had a phone conversation with him. We've met with him in person. We had another conversation with him again last week, trying to find options and so forth. We have done every single thing humanly possible, and it gets a little discouraging when somebody comes and says we're not doing anything when in fact, three years ago, we spent $45 million to nourish the beach. Our nourishment programs are designed to last five years, but who in the world would have known, guessed that Mother Nature was gonna issue this blow in 2025? To now that we have moved, we were scheduled to do it in 2027. Y'all know, we voted, we moved it to 2026. We would've done it in 2025 if we would've been able to get the bids out there and have somebody bid on it. But we don't have but three major dredging companies that can even do the work. And now we're getting ready to spend another $50 million to nourish that. And to say we're not doing anything is very discouraging to hear from somebody to make those comments.
And not to mention, three years you've spent on the Highway 12 task force.
That's exactly right. I formed the Highway Task Force. We had every single stakeholder, including Southern Environmental Law Center that supported us. The answer is short bridges, like the Etheridge Bridge that we have. And just right now, this afternoon, when I leave this meeting, I outlined a letter to send to our legislators. And I'm gonna do this one way or the other. Certified letter, or somehow knowing that they get this letter and read it. And I'm gonna send it to every single senator and representative in the state. I'm asking for two things. Several years ago, you established a beach nourishment fund and didn't put a penny in it. And I'm asking you to put money into that beach nourishment fund, not for Dare County, but for the entire coast of North Carolina. And the second thing I'm asking them to do is to eliminate the ban on growings and jetties. and jetties. And if I have to, Commissioner Ballance has said she can rouse up enough people in Hatteras Island or whatever. We got to take a couple of buses to Raleigh and sit in front of their doorstep and then sit in front of their office to make sure they read the letter and help us out. We need help. We cannot any longer do it on our own. We have spent over $250 million in the last 12 years of nourishing our beaches, $250 million. And we're getting ready to spend another $50 million to do Buxton. And the list goes on and on, folks. We're working ourselves to death daily trying to do something to establish our oceanfront all the way to Hatteras Island. And we're talking to every single human being we can talk to. We're talking to the governor's office. We're talking to our local legislators. We're trying to now talk to the rest of the legislators throughout the state. The Dare County needs help financially.
And to your comment on the property, so the state owns three miles out.
Right.
The federal government owns the beach. And that leads up to the private property owns from where the federal government ends at the high tide line to the right away, which is state.
I got you.
Okay, so we're in between.
I'm pretty sure some of them watch.
We're in between the state, the feds, the Park Service, and Mother Nature. And the county is caught in the middle. And we can only be as loud as we can be. And I think, I've been on the phone with Bob every day, sometimes two and three times a day since Aaron. This weird, I can legitimately say everything that we are possibly in our power to do is being done. And so we do need to, we've got to figure something out, but as slow as government moves to as quickly as Mother Nature moves, it's scary, but it is what it is. So we've got to come together and figure out how to have one united message that we can take to the feds and the state to fight this together because coming at it, a bunch of different voices and my heart, I've been through Isabel, the people in Buxton watching this happen every time, they're just screaming for help because they see it every day. And it's frustrating for us because we know what we're doing, but we also have to find a place where we see what they're seeing. And I guess because I'm down there, I see that. I know it's hard for us up here and for Bobby and Bob and the ones that are making the phone calls and doing all of the hard work on the backside of it that we can't tell the people that are on the beach that are doing, that are seeing it every day. But I promise you, there's nobody up here that wants to see any more destruction there or doesn't want to step in and make it all go away. But it's just going to take time. Unfortunately, it's probably going to get worse before it gets better. But beautiful things came out of Isabel and I believe that beautiful things will come out of this. It's just hard to see right now.
Thank you. Is any more public comment?
No, public comment's closed.
All right, county manager.
Senator, that brings us to item five. Kevin Leonard, the executive director of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is here. And this follows from a conversation that I had with Denise Steinagel about the association, what they do for us, what you can do for them. And so we asked Kevin to come down and talk to us about that. And with that, Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Kevin, thank you. Thank you for being here this morning. Hopefully you brought a pocket full of money, would you? Just joking with you.
Not sure about that. I will say this, that it's been an inspiring conversation to hear. And I'm glad that I was in the audience.
I am too, Kevin. I was thinking of that as you walked up to the podium. You got a very, very clear, in full technicolor view of Dare County's issues and why we're trying so desperately to influence legislators to enable us to try to get some solutions and with state assistance.
I'm thrilled, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to be here today and to hear that and the passion in which not only your community has come to talk to you, but the passion that you brought to the community to demonstrate to them, your heart of public service. So it truly is a gift to be able to listen to this. And I truly appreciate the opportunity to be before you. My name is Kevin Leonard. I'm your executive director of your state association. I have the honor of representing you in that way. And it truly is an honor for me to do that. And I represent a whole team across the entire state of North Carolina that works every day for you and the other 99 counties in the state of North Carolina. I'm joined by two of my colleagues and I wanted to introduce you to them. Denise Steinagel is what I call a recovering county manager from Wilson County. But she's on our team now, a member of our outreach team. She is your touch point. If you need anything, you can reach out to her. She often reaches out to Bobby and staff, but you can always reach out to her. Of course, you can reach out to me or anybody else on the team, but she's your designated person for this area of the state. And I'm also joined by Norma Houston, who y'all may know, who lives here in Dare County. Norma and I have had a chance to work together for a very long time in my career at state government. And when she recently retired, I wouldn't stop calling and pestering her to come join our team. And so I was able to convince her to join us in a part-time role. And she's working on our disaster technical assistance team, which is new for our association. And I'll look forward to telling you a little bit about in a moment. I do have a presentation, PowerPoint. And I can go as slowly or fast through that as possible. I'll try to be concise and save time. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, if anything that you want to talk about, we have lots that we could talk about legislatively speaking. There are a lot of issues going on. But let me start with a thank you for your public service. Just again, listening this morning, the daily operations of local public service are complex and we know that. And I had a lot of stuff I was going to say here, but the thing I want to boil down to is that it makes me think you're not alone, that your association is here for you as commissioners and as your staff. We're here for them because there's a lot of complex things that you have to wrestle with every single day. And our aim is to try to make it a little bit easier on you. If it's knowing that you're not alone because you've got 587 county commissioners across the state of North Carolina who are going through very similar things. They may not be going through beach re-nourishment, but they're going through very challenging things as well. And so reaching out to them to learn from that, we can connect you with those folks. But your job's not an easy one and I recognize that. And your association is a safe place, a safe harbor for you to come. You know, our association was founded in 1908 and we've been working together since then. We're not, we're a nonpartisan group. As a lot of our leaders say, we're not red or blue, but we're county green. So it's a place that we all work for county government and what's good for local government. I often say when I get to talk to commissioners across the state or groups, that county government is the front door to democracy. And you witnessed it today. People coming in to talk to their local representatives about things that are important to them. And I'll be delicate about this, but we all know that the federal government is shut down right now. The state government has not passed a budget. And y'all are here. Y'all are doing the work. Y'all are the practitioners of government, making it work every single day. And I thank you for that. And it's not like you're in it for the large sums of money, all the thank you notes, all of the things. You're doing it because you care about Dare County and you care about the people that live here. And we recognize that as your association. I do bring greetings from your president of the association, Wallace Nelson, who's from Proquemmons County. I will say and bring to your attention that his presidential initiative this year is focused on access to healthcare. He's, as I said, from Proquemmons County, so he knows a lot about rural healthcare. And Norma was telling me and I overheard Bobby talking about the helicopter that y'all have. I'm not sure, but y'all might be the only county to have a helicopter because of your healthcare needs and the island. So completely understand that. And that's something that is unique, but you have to have access to healthcare. And President Wallace Nelson, he knows that. And he's going to help us shine a light on that this year as we discuss that. I'm going to move on. So this is my generic PowerPoint about the value of your membership. So let me thank you for that, the value. You have been members for the association. We've had 100 counties be members of the association for as long as I know. And so we don't take that for granted. We thank you for your membership in the association. As I said, we started in 1908. A gentleman named C.E. Foye from Carteret County, he said, we are better doing this together than doing it apart, especially down in Raleigh or in Washington DC on our advocacy. So we were born out of that advocacy. Our motto or our vision is empowering 100 counties to work together for the betterment of one state. Our mission is the North Carolina Association supports and promotes all the counties through advocacy, education, research, and member services. So let me jump into a couple of these services that we provide. We're not just advocacy, we're a lot more than advocacy. We've been running programs that help your county and other counties for years that have given back funding to your county. We run a program called EMS Medicaid that helps set the rates or give knowledge to the secretary of HHS to set the rates on ambulance EMS Medicaid rates. And we will do a cost report that will give money back to your county and to other counties enrolled in the program. Since its inception, we've been able to save counties about $750 million in monies back to you. And just last year in '24, it was $50 million. We have a debt set off program. This is money that is already owed to your county, whether it's through property taxes or things that are not collected. And this program helps you collect those debts. And so 15 million last year, 324 million since the inception of the program in 2002. I'll call out your county manager here and recognize him. Mr. Outen was on the association's 555 Committee, which helped craft, I would say, the best opioid memorandum of agreement in the country. And so that was a big deal. And Bobby, thank you so much for your leadership on that. It was five county attorneys, five county managers, and five county commissioners from across the state of North Carolina that negotiated with the attorney general at the time for the opioid settlement. And so those funds are coming directly to your county. Louisiana's got us beat, but they found out after we did it, we had 80% of all of the proceeds from the settlement going to the counties. And that was not the default. So that's a big deal. And again, crafted by your own county manager here was a part of that negotiation. Now, I have a long list here of things to talk about because this is where you may know us the best in our advocacy space. You know about our legislative goals process. So if you have an idea, if there's something that you want to bring to the association to raise up for awareness or adoption by the full membership, we have a goal setting process. It's pretty remarkable, the association, I think, that we're able to have such a process that brings 100 counties together and forward a legislative goal set where we can all agree upon that. Some would say, maybe, maybe the state and the federal government could take some lessons from the ability of our commissioners to get together and work some of these things out.
[inaudible]
And it also takes into account that we know that we have the mountains and we have the coast and the Piedmont region with all of the uniquenesses that counties bring. We recognize those things and we try to put those things together in legislative goals that we can work on collectively down at the General Assembly. A lot of what you, a lot of what we do, you may not see. It's a lot of defensive work. And I know, I'm looking at the board, y'all know what I mean, down at the General Assembly or in Congress, when members get together, there are a lot of great ideas. And some of those ideas have unintended consequences as it relates to the impacts on county governments, unfunded mandates and such, and rules that we would have to follow that would be onerous to our county residents. And so a lot of the work that we do is behind the scenes in committee, making sure that those bills are modified so that they don't have those negative impacts that you see. One, and this was a particular segment of our counties, about 19 counties that were in the state health plan, it came out that they were going to have increased premiums. And it was a surprise. So we worked quietly with the treasurer as well as members of the General Assembly to get that delayed. And so the sort of, those things that are quiet and behind the scenes. A lot of things also are on the defensive side. I'm thinking about property taxes. This year, we saw an unprecedented amount of legislation that wanted to pass property tax exemption and exclusions. I take, I take, I take issue with that. And so does your lobbying crew down there because your advocacy team, that's the state government saying, we want to give certain segments of the population a property tax exemption. And if they want to do that, that's fine. But they need to use their state dollars to do it and not use your dollars to pay for what they're passing. That is an unfunded mandate. And again, I was in committee talking about these different groups of folks. And it's not like we're against wanting to give property tax relief to certain groups, but it's, again, it's the issue of the state government wanting to spend your money to do it. And so we were successful in fighting back against some of those things or modifying that language that was in the House Finance Committee. Another specific issue I'll raise to you is land use and zoning. There's been a lot of conversation about affordable housing. And the Home Builders Association, whom friends with the Home Builders Association, executive director, it's a tedious issue about affordable housing, but they want to, there are certain elements in the General Assembly that want to take away your land use ability, your right to regulate your land and zoning in your county. And we're not for that. That's your decision. You are the people who are elected by your community, by your county to make those decisions about how to best adopt policies related to land use and zoning, not the General Assembly. So those levers need to stay with you. And that's the position of the association. School funding, lottery funding, I know there's a big issue. We worked a decade on making sure that the funding came back to school construction out of the lottery. At one time, it was, it was down to 17%. And now it's over 50% of the lottery dollars come to our counties for school construction. And we were able to help modify that for renovations as well, not just new construction. I'm going to spend a moment on federal policy because I found myself this past year working more at the federal level than I ever have. I've been to Washington in the past three weeks, three times, to talk to Senator Bud Antillis. In fact, less than a week ago, we were sitting with both of them, talking about Helene recovery and members of the House. If there's an opportunity for you to get engaged on FEMA, now is it. And I would encourage you to do so. And I can help you if you want that. We were up there advocating on Helene, but being down here at Dare County, y'all know hurricanes better than anybody. And right now, my assessment of what's going on with Helene recovery, and this is what I told both senators and representatives of the White House last week, is we're caught in the middle. Our reimbursements, in fact, I called some of your staff to talk about this, that is this normal, this lag on reimbursement? It's not fast. We all know that. But it's really slow right now going on in the mountain counties. And my assessment is that the president came down and he said, we're not going to forget North Carolina and we're going to fix FEMA. And what they've done through their FEMA Task Force is they've taken the gears apart and it's sort of laying on the garage floor right now of the motor. And right now, North Carolina is in limbo. And so this was the message that I took to Washington last week. But here's why I think this is critically important for this board and for people down on the coast. We got to work together to get this fixed fast. And I know that y'all have already taken steps to put money aside in case you got to go it alone. And we can't go it alone. We've got to fix FEMA, whatever that looks like. I'm not sure yet. There is a bill in the House, in the US House, and I can get you the There is a bill in the House, in the US House, and I can get you the number, I can't remember it off the top of my head, but we were lobbying on that last week in Congress. And NACO, the National Association, has a disaster task force. We played our Hurricane Helene documentary for them, and we likely will be doing that again in February, March at the National Legislative Conference. And that's where I think if you want to get involved and lobby on making sure FEMA is working by next season, the press is on to do it during that timeframe. And happy to get y'all connected with the folks there, and we can work together to do that. It's imperative that we do this together to get this before the next storm hits. And the odds are, the next storm's going to come down here, not up in the mountains. So that's advocacy. Again, I could talk, we could talk about Medicaid and SNAP and all of the things that, that's another reason we've been really engaged lately, is House Bill 1, HR 1, that passed is going to significantly shift responsibilities to counties in North Carolina for their determination eligibility of certain folks who are on Medicaid as well as SNAP. And that's going to put pressure on your Department of Social Services. So I know y'all are already aware of that. It's something we've been pushing hard on and have been working directly with the North Carolina Secretary of HHS about how we're going to tackle that in the next year. Because you're going to have to start looking at that in your next budget cycle in the spring of next year and how that's going to impact things. So that's advocacy. Our conference and events, I've seen many of y'all there, and we wish that you would come some more. Annual conference will be in Durham next year. It was good to see many of you in Pitt County. I hope that y'all enjoyed your time there. One of the great benefits of your association, as I said, is knowing that you're not alone and meeting people across the entire state that come to our conference, and you can find out what's going on in their county. We produce, I put a map book in front of you. It's at your dais. There's a lot of great data. We just released that in August. It's a great tool that you can use to compare yourselves in the region or across the state, but we can also do tailored research. In fact, today, we just hired a new director of our research, our past director. She left us because she's now head of the Local Government Commission, Denise Canada. Not a bad person to have over in that spot. But we, literally today, our new research director started. So if you've got some work for us, let us know, we can get her on that right away. We do a budget and tax survey, get good information that's broad-based across the entire state. I mentioned our documentary, and I attended your second meeting, I believe it was, of the Coastal County Fisheries Meeting. And we did talk about maybe, and I've already talked to Chris, our director, about maybe getting some video and working with Dorothy on that, and committed to making sure that we tell the story of our coastal communities, coastal counties, and the importance of fisheries through our communications channels to do that. So we have opioid technical assistance, financial technical assistance. Y'all don't need this, but if there's ever a search that you need for county, senior county professional staff, we can do that. That's a lot of the work that Denise does for this area of the state and the counties. The things I'm telling you, really, we're the only association doing some of this work in the nation. The General Assembly gave us funding to provide technical disaster assistance, helping work through the complexity of FEMA paperwork, which y'all know far too well about. And I wish that we had had this previously when y'all were going through some. But my aim is to build a team that will do this for the future, for all of our counties across the state, because you can't go it alone. Y'all have a remarkable staff here who are doing things, but we can help you not only in the technical assistance space, but in the advocacy space as well. I've already talked about the robust network. I know I'm going long, so I'll try to wrap it up. If you want to get involved, we'd love to have you involved. There are plenty of opportunities through the meetings that we hold, but also the steering committees that we have. If you want to volunteer to be a chair, because you, you know, you just don't have enough to do already, you might want to volunteer to be a chair of a steering committee, which is appointed by our president. So you would, you need to start talking to those incoming presidents about that. But a great way to start is just to volunteer to serve on a steering committee, learn about statewide issues. Again, the network of people that you will meet is tremendous. And I think that's about it. There's a lot of resources that we've provided to you. Mr. Chair, thank you again for the time. I hope that wasn't boring or too long-winded. If there's anything that you ever need, please know that we're here. And as I said, you're not alone. Your association's here to help you.
Kevin, we certainly appreciate you being here today, and yes, thank you for your support of the Coastal Counties Coalition. I know we spoke at the last meeting, and I appreciate your help and certainly working with our staff with that. It's pretty critical, and we need all the help we can get there, and I thank you for your support there.
Yes, sir.
It means a lot to us.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything they'd like to ask of Kevin?
I love the video educational on our Coastal Coalition Fisheries, what we're trying to accomplish, the impacts. So ASAP, what can we do to help move it along and provide you whatever's needed to get it done?
Yeah, we've already got a 23-minute video from a few years ago, still relevant.
I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Chris Baucham, who I mentioned earlier by first name, is a Dare County alum too. He used to work on your team here. And so I'll make sure that we get up with Dorothea. And by the way, she's going to also be helping us teach our chairs training in January on crisis communication. So we appreciate you doing that. But we'll get together with you about getting that video and as much of the raw footage as we can to do that.
Thank you again, Kevin. And as always, Norma, nice to see you here. Appreciate all you've done over the years. And Denise, we appreciate you being here as well. We'll have to start loading up your email box.
You go for it. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you again for everything, and we're always here if you need anything.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item six on the agenda. This is a resolution to repeal a portion of our ordinance with regard to the recording requirements for documents in our Register of Deeds, Cheryl House is here for that presentation.
Good morning, Cheryl, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. I am asking, Bobby will read the resolution shortly, to have, actually, it was 1979, there was an ordinance put out that required the return to be put on all real estate documents. 1979, it was necessary. 2025, it's not. We have, like, most of our recordings are done electronically or brought in. Very few are mailed in anymore. Even if they are, we still have the prepared by that we can return these documents to. Right now, if we get a document that does not have the return to, no matter which way they're recording it, we have to reject it, which takes time. If we have to mail it back, that can stop them from getting the funding that they applied for. So what I'm asking is that that part of this ordinance be removed.
You want to read that resolution, Bobby?
I will. Whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners previously adopted an ordinance requiring that the Register of Deeds not accept for registration any map or instrument affecting real property unless both A, the name and address of the person to whom the document is to be returned, and B, the grantee or owner's permanent mailing address were affixed on the face of the document. And whereas the Board of Commissioners recognizes that modern recording procedures and electronic filing systems now provide an automatic means for the return of recorded documents, making the return-to-address requirement unnecessary. And whereas the Board finds that repealing the return-to-address portion of the ordinance will streamline recording procedures while maintaining the requirement for the grantees or owner's permanent mailing address to ensure accurate property records. Now therefore being resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners hereby repeals that portion of the ordinance adopted pursuant to NCGS 161-30, which requires that the name and address of the person to whom the document is to be returned be affixed on the face of the document. Further resolved that all of the provisions of the ordinance, including the requirement that the grantees or owner's permanent mailing address appear on the face of the document, shall remain in full force and effect this third day of November 2025.
Pleasure of the board. There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Balance. Do I hear second? Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Is there further discussion?
I have no opposition. I just have to confess, I read this and thought, this is like a nit. Why are we even putting time? So clearly, I didn't understand. I was going to ask you just for a moment, for me, why is this a big deal that we should repeal it? And again, not that I'm opposed to repealing it at all, I just don't understand why it adds so much complication to your life, Cheryl.
So if we get a document mailed in to us, and it does not have the return to on that document, we have to mail it back to them. That with the mail today, depending on where it's going, can take a week to two weeks. During that time period, if someone has applied for a loan and that time period ends, they possibly have just lost their interest rate. And in losing their interest rate, they may not be able to buy the property that they were wanting to purchase. If we're able to go ahead and record it without that on it, it fixes a problem.
So it was originally, I may look the county manager on this, it was originally passed by this board for a reason, or do you think we're just being extraneously complicated?
In the past, you didn't have e-filing. So every document that got recorded, you had to walk in the courthouse and hand them a piece of paper.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's all I need.
With e-recording today, it's just really not necessary.
Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries now.
Thank you.
Chairman, item seven on the agenda is an update on the Thrive OBX Initiative, and Sheila Davies and Amy Montgomery are here for that.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Thank y'all for being here.
Sheila.
I know. It's all right. Don't look at this. Good morning. You know, as I was thinking about Amy and I coming before you this morning, I was thinking, you know, on your agenda and just some of the stuff that you're dealing with, we're dealing with in the county is so heavy and so stressful. I was even thinking, gosh, is this the right time to bring this update to you? And then I thought, yeah, it actually, it really is, because what we're going to share with you, the update on Thrive OBX, it really is something uplifting and hoping the county can continue to embrace this. As tough as things are, there always needs to be bright places of hope and where we can actually engage with our citizenry in well-being and thriving and living. And that's what this initiative is all about. So I'm excited that Amy and I are here now to talk about this. We, the county and Outer Banks Health Hospital, have had a longstanding relationship and really many, many successful initiatives. Interestingly, Amy and I actually go way back as well. We actually competed on the same softball team in high school back in Suffolk, Virginia. One of us is a year older than the other, I won't say which, but anyway. So our partnership as well goes way back, and it's kind of neat to see that we're both here in Dare County and both working for some amazing wellness.
The same softball team? Are you kidding me?
Yeah. Yep. Pretty amazing. So, but in taking that spirit of partnership and camaraderie and working towards wellness and well-being, we are going to, you know, continue to push this relationship between Dare County and Outer Banks Health forward, and Thrive OBX is going to be a great way to do that. Many of you were involved when we worked on bringing the Blue Zones here to examine, you know, what would that look like in Dare County? Is Dare County poised and ready? And after some great conversations, initiative, engagement with community stakeholders, taking what the Blue Zones brought back to us after the community assessment and analysis, our committee met and decided, you know, we already are, as you may have heard, you know, kind of a nice shade of blue. We believe we have the resources and capacity in Dare County to actually take that initiative on ourselves as a community instead of having to pay a consultant to lead us there. So I'm excited. I'm going to turn it over to Amy to talk about where we are going now and the initiatives that we're hoping to get you all involved as well as the community moving forward.
Thank you, Sheila. It doesn't look like you'll be playing softball anytime soon, but one day. I think there's a PowerPoint, if we could pull that up. Thank you. And we're on Y Thrive OBX, maybe the third slide. Oh, I have it. Ooh, thank you. There we go. Good morning. Thank you for having us this morning. So Sheila got us started this morning in terms of Y Thrive OBX. You do recall, we brought the Blue Zones experts here to Dare County to do an assessment. Many of you were involved in that assessment. And we did it because, as Sheila mentioned, we already believe that Dare County has so many of the assets of a Blue Zones community, a community that's, it's already been mentioned this morning, that has just really strong assets for fresh and local food, seafood being one, right? As a connected community, a community where there's a lot of social support for one another, a community where there's a lot of connection, a community where there's a lot of ability to get outside and move organically, walk on the beach, use one of our parks, the many of the assets that you all protect. So thank you. We decided not to go bring the Blue Zones all the way to town and become Blue Zones certified, because we've heard this morning, there's a lot of funding needs in our community. And the Blue Zones wanted $8 million to certify us, and we decided that was not a good investment for our community, that we could do this work ourselves. We have the talent of Sheila and her team and our team at Outer Banks Health to continue on this path to well-being in our community without sending $8 million to Minnesota. So I think we made a really good choice there. But a really good reason too, that why we're continuing on this path, is what we know by lots of longitudinal research of millions of people over time proves time and time again that our well-being and our longevity is really tied to the decisions we make each and every day and our lifestyle. So 60% of our well-being and our longevity is tied to the decisions we make every day and the environment we live in, and whether it's a healthy environment. 30% is tied to our genetics, and then 10%, and it is important, is access to essential healthcare services. And we work hard on that with you all every day as well. So we just really do feel like it's the right thing to do, to be in the space of helping individuals in our community, live in a community that promotes well-being and longevity, as well as know the things that they can do on a daily basis, the decisions they can make to improve their well-being. You know, much like the conversation about, you know, cleaning up, you know, that individual responsibility as well as what the county can do. Healthcare is the same way. It's a shared responsibility, and this is our part in educating the community. So what is Thrive OBX? Thrive OBX is a community initiative designed to inspire well-being and longevity. And what our local team did, the Health Department and folks at Outer Banks Health, is we took the Blue Zones Power Nine, you probably remember that from a year, yeah, I know you do, and then the Six Pillars of Lifestyle Medicine, and we combined those into five things, just to keep it really simple for people. So what are they? Nurish. So everything we put in our mouths is important, right? The good things and the things we shouldn't put in our bodies. And so it's, you know, basically a plant-forward diet with lots of fresh local seafood and all those things that are healthy for us, as well as avoiding harmful substances. So that's one of our pillars. Movement. Our bodies were made to move, so any movement that we can do to keep our bodies moving is essential for good health. Purpose. What they found through the Blue Zones research is it's really important for individuals to know their purpose. Why do I get up in the morning? Why does it matter that I show up? Because giving, having a purpose gives you a reason to live, right? And then engagement. We talked a lot this morning, we heard from this nice young woman planning the event for older adult services coming up in November about engagement. She said the word connection a few times, so I hope we have a Thrive booth there. But it's, human connection is really essential, and that doesn't mean you have to have 50 friends and go to big parties every weekend, right? That means, do you have three people you could call in a pinch? It means, do you belong to a faith-based organization? Doesn't matter what it is, where you have social support, where you can go to a place, a you have social support, where you can go to a place, a third place, people know your name, people care about you and are looking after you. We have a lot of that in this community. And then balance, restoring, you know, the stress relief and sleep. Good sleep is essential to well-being. So we are implementing Thrive as we speak. So Thrive OBX initiatives, we've started in Dare County schools. We have a Thrive liaison in every school. And we are implementing Thrive activities in the schools. And we're letting the schools choose. What do they want to focus on? Some schools are getting pedometers and engaging with activity and movement among their students. Some schools are choosing to focus on their teachers and doing some connection activities after school. So it just depends on what they want to do. We also are engaged with Food for Thought, the program that the county supports, where students take home food on Fridays, because, you know, they need food over the weekend. And so our lead nurse, Debbie Dutton, is leading that project where we're having Thrive information in those bags on Fridays. So that's one way we're engaged. And then the Thrive Bites trailer, you'll see it pictured. If you attended our Cancer Shucks events a couple of weeks ago, you saw it there. But this is our mobile food trailer, where we're taking healthy eating and recipes on the road. We'll bring it to the county for county team members, I'm sure. And we have a great partnership with your Emergency Operations Center with Thrive Bites. So next time you guys are sequestered for a big storm, we're going to have Thrive Bites and our chef on site to cook for you. And in return, the EOC is going to shelter our trailer so it doesn't rust and is no good to us in a couple of years. So great partnership there. And then Thrive OBX in the workplace. At Outer Banks Health, we're implementing it with team members. And Sheila and Elizabeth Riley and your team are going to do that here. So Dare County team members will benefit from some initiatives. And last but not least, if you're here during the month of February, we have designated February twenty twenty six, and every month, every February thereafter is Thrive Month. So we are, we have twenty-five different activities in all the five categories. And we've set it up similar to the Twelve Bars of Christmas. I know some of you've participated in that. You buy a punch card and you, you know, you go. And so you can buy a punch card for Thrive and then participate in healthy activities on an honor system, punch your card, and then we'll have prizes at the end of the month. So this will be a community-wide initiative where during the entire month of February, we're focused on well-being and longevity. And then our website will go live very soon. And these are our social media sites and websites, Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, because we'll have some movement dances and things like that, and YouTube. So this is Thrive OBX, and we're happy to share it with you. And thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Amy, will there be the gala event in February or March that was last year, Blue Zones?
Yes, it will be February twenty eighth. So it will culminate the Thrive Month. And we're just going to have lots of fun activities.
Save the date.
Save the date. February twenty eighth. And that funds a lot of our initiatives. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Sheila, while I got you, would you bring us up to date of where we stand with SNAP and how it's going to affect there? And do we have any alternatives or whatever? Can you, do you have a minute to update?
Yes, sir. So as you all may know, with the government shutdown, there's impacts to both SNAP and WIC. SNAP benefits, the ability to provide additional funding ended on November first. So what that means for SNAP recipients, which there's about eighteen hundred in Dare County, it fluctuates between sixteen and eighteen hundred, but as of a report this morning, it's in the eighteen hundreds. Any of those individuals who had benefits on their SNAP, their EPT card already, they could still use those, but they don't get any additional money allocation for November, so their monthly allocation. And that's the way it is, unfortunately, until the government opens up. And then fortunately, when it does reopen, it would be very quick for us to be able to then issue those benefits, whatever their benefit status is. But until then, until the government opens, we have no ability to provide any additional funding. Yes, sir.
Eighteen hundred, sixty. I'm not trying to pin you to a number. I'm thinking out loud. A quick percentage wouldn't be accurate to say thirty-seven thousand people live here, eighteen hundred people, or sort of eighteen hundred individual clients that may have several people supported by them.
No, it's eighteen hundred individuals. It's about just over a thousand accounts. And then those accounts, because you might have children on your account.
Yes, that's what I was getting at.
Yes. So just over a thousand, it equals about eighteen hundred individuals.
Five percent would be a fair estimate of county.
Individuals.
Individuals.
And then WIC right now is about another six hundred and fifty. So on the WIC side of that, the WIC is Women Infant and Children Program. That's for, basically, it's for breastfeeding support, formula support. It's for up to children age five. Those benefits, it's also federally funded. The state, there's enough allocation for North Carolina. We just received word this morning. We thought it would go until November fifteenth, but they ran recap, they're calculating all the time, managing the numbers. WIC benefits look like they'll be able to extend until November thirtieth, based on the money that's in the state to support WIC. But SNAP ended effective November first.
What did we, do we know what an average monthly is on the SNAP?
It ranges. I can tell you, last month, collectively, for those roughly eighteen hundred, it was about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Wow, for a month.
Benefits.
For the month?
Yes.
That's lower than I thought. I was doing some projections.
So our portion of the county to administer those programs, it's roughly about sixty thousand dollars a month that we typically get from the federal government to pay for the staff to administer those benefits on the SNAP side. And it's just under twenty thousand on the WIC side to administer the benefits to the WIC individuals.
Do we have staff that's specifically assigned to SNAP?
We do. And the tough thing there is their work doesn't stop even because the government shut down. We are still contractually required to accept applications, to monitor the applications, to validate, to make sure that we're only giving benefits away to those individuals who are eligible. That work did not get suspended. So our staff still have the work to do. We just can't give out the actual support. On the WIC side, staff are still, we have the funds right now from the state to keep operating WIC until the end of November. And so, you know, staff are still needed in that role. And even if the government shut down, we're to go beyond that for WIC, they can still provide case management. They can still help our families try to find resources. We have been in touch with all of our local nonprofits that either provide aid during gap time, or our food banks, or those who can assist. We did issue a media release on October twenty ninth that lists all of the different food resources, or resources for those who find themselves financially in stress during these times. So that's on the county website, but it explains what's happening at the federal government, and then also where people can go, who they can reach out to locally for some support and assistance.
If the, if the government goes back in, are those payments prorated? Like, I know sometimes they.
That's still up for debate right now. So we don't have a definite answer.
Sheila, when we talked, or I talked with Chuck last week, the staff cost that goes on during the shutdown, whether we get the funds or not, we have the ability to cover that until when?
On the health side, we calculated into the, into the, probably the spring. And on the social services side, Chuck feels pretty confident probably into February, March, without an issue right now. We would be doing that through lap salary and, you know, moving money. But, so we're, we're feeling pretty secure with our staff and being, you know, with those positions even without the funding. Hopefully, though, we do get the reimbursement for where they haven't been funding us, but we just aren't sure yet.
So that eighty thousand dollars a month for those two programs, if the shutdown prolonged, then we can keep the staff that we're required to have, whether they pay the benefit or not, indefinitely without having to pull out, come to you for additional funding.
Right.
We don't have the ability to cover the benefits at four hundred and some thousand dollars a month.
Three seventy-five, you said?
Three seventy-five.
And then WIC as well, an additional.
How much was WIC?
WIC runs anywhere probably about eighty to ninety thousand.
Okay, sorry, I missed that one.
Got a question, Sheila.
Yes, sir.
And maybe you can help me with this, maybe you can't. But I'm hands-on with the Roanoke Island Food Pantry. And obviously, now that SNAP benefits are cut out, we've, you've listed on the website all the resources available. I'd also add, there are a lot of our local churches you can reach out to. And there's tons of people willing to help in these type of situations, certainly here in Dare County. And I'm proud of that. But wild game. Can we bring that to a food pantry? Do you know?
I don't believe you can. I don't know for sure, but I don't, I don't think you can.
Is that a state law or a federal?
I'd have to get back with you, Mr. Creep. I'm not sure.
Okay, because we need to change that, because I could stock food pantries around here. We meet through our numerous hunting clubs in the area for long-tenured periods of time. I've always thought it was the responsibility of charity to take care of people and not the government, anyway. But needless to say, there's numerous resources available. And please come by our local food pantries, and we take new applications, and we love, we love to help.
Thank you. Anything else?
Sheila, thank you for that update on SNAP and WIC. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully, the folks in DC will wake up. Maybe they'll have an epiphany for today's over. Who knows?
I did hear a credible news story over the weekend that implied, after tomorrow's election, that either Tuesday night or Wednesday, there would be a breakthrough on this.
Yeah.
And we'll see. But I heard that story.
Well, we'll see. I don't know how that happens. Yeah. All right. County manager?
Sure. That brings us to item eight on the agenda. This is a modification to our lobbying contract. In the past, we've paid our lobbyists five thousand dollars a month while the legislature was in session. And so what started to happen is the legislature never goes out of session, even though they're not working. And so we were paying for sessions where there was nothing to be done because there was nobody there to lobby. And so we were talking about that. And it was suggested that rather than do it by session, because you don't know when they're going to be in session, you don't know when they're going to come back for two days or whatever, that we just go to a lump sum on a twelve-month schedule, which is what the legislature seems to be on. Now, our lobbying cost obviously would be about sixty thousand a year. They suggested maybe we cut that to fifty thousand dollar lump sum, and then we don't have to try to figure out whether they're in session or out of session. They'll work for us twelve months out of the year, doing the things that we need done up there, doing the research, whatever we want them to do during that period. And again, the way the legislature is operating now, that would potentially save us around ten thousand dollars a year.
I'd make motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion on the floor about a vice chair, seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for discussion?
No brainer.
Well, let me just, this, this came from them. So I, I, I'm really pleased that they're looking after our interests. But with that being said, the fishing coalition, you know, it's been recommended we hire lobbyists, but that's going to go over like a lid balloon, just like everything else we're talking to the rest of the coalition about. I've had a conversation with Harry, and he's entertaining this, that we, anytime we have a issue or resolution or whatever, county-wise, that would support the coalition, that he had this, his list of to-dos for us. So, and I'm hoping without any additional funding. So we'll, I'll wait to hear back from him. He's going to talk to his coworkers, and he'll get back to me. But just keep that in the back of your mind. We need to, for them to lobby for us, especially with resolutions that our boards put now to the legislature. So that's FYI. Any further?
Mr. Chairman, in that regard, though, if we ask him to lobby on fishery issues for Dare County, that's part of our contract.
Right, that's right.
Only if we throw in the coalition that they've got to figure out what they want to do.
That's correct. Any further comments, any questions, comments? All right. Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Item nine on the agenda is the consent agenda. You have the approval of amendments from October sixth. You have the tax collector's report. You have the budget amendment for the A two fifty committee. You have a public works utility easement. You have a mini Brooks exemption resolution. You have a budget amendment for disaster recovery fund. You have a budget amendment to close out the affordable housing grant. You have a proposed Dare County Public Library Advisory Board bylaws. You have a Hatters Water Plant Reverse Osmosis Water Treatment Unit sole source resolution. And you have the Dare County DHHS Public Health, NC DHHS Office of Rural Health Telehealth Infrastructure Grant.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item nine, I'm sorry, item ten is your board appointments. You have the Older Adult Services. Claudia Hennessy's term expires this month. She does not wish to be reappointed. The Older Adults Services Council recommends that Betsy Kelly be appointed to fill Hennessy's seat and to appoint Dawn Askew and Laura Fitzgerald to the other two vacancies.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your Veterans Advisory Council. Anthony Imperiale's term expires this month, and the council recommends his reappointment.
Motion to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chair to reappoint. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Creef. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we need to go back to the Older Adults Services. Included on the list should have been Commissioner Burris's seat as well. We need to appoint him.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Senator.
Commissioner Bateman is second.
Second.
Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your upcoming board and committee appointments. In December, you have the Equalization Review Board with five terms expiring, the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation Review Committee with three terms expiring, the Tourism Board with six terms expiring, the Working Watermen's Commission with one term expiring. And that's in January. And then in February, you have the Planning Board with three terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right, county manager. Appreciate that. That brings us to item eleven, and that's commissioner's business and county manager's business. Do you have anything else for us today?
Yes, sir, I do. First of all, Commissioner Balance has been working down. It had us hard on trying to help us with some daycare issues down there. And from that, some other things have occurred. The state recently updated, and I say that because we've got, this is about a daycare issue, and that's a critical need in Dare County now. State recently updated the definition of family care, family care home that would allow ten children in a residential setting if it was adopted in a local amendment. There is a local provider that's going to come to you. They haven't done it yet, but they're going to come to amend our ordinances to allow that ten care in-house daycare. However, there's a four hundred dollar fee to ask, to request, our fee schedule requires you to pay a four hundred dollar application fee anytime that you ask for a text amendment to our zoning code. And they're asking that that fee be waived. I don't have a particular problem with waiving the fee, but the issue is, I don't think you can waive a fee for just one person. You can't waive my fee and then charge it to Dorothy next week. just one person. You can't waive my fee and then charge it to Dorothy next week. So if we're interested in waiving the fee, then we need to do something more generic that's, treats like people alike, so that we, if we're going to waive it, we waive it for, you know, daycare providers who are seeking amendments will, will not be charged the fee. And that way, anybody that came in to amend the zoning ordinances to, to do daycare, we wouldn't charge that fee.
Who, who is the questioner again?
Uh, this came from Sarah Sampson at the Children and Youth Partnership. The prop, the person that's the local provider is somebody named Melissa Cooper.
So this is a local resident saying, please waive the fee for my application to
Correct.
Be approved.
To, to amend the ordinance to allow the ten person in-home daycare.
So up to ten children.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we just decrease the fee, so it would be more applicable for them to be able to do it?
Let's get ready to say the thing.
You know, fifty bucks.
You all set the fee schedule, so we can do it. Do you want it fifty bucks for anybody who does a budget amendment, period, or just for, just for daycare?
Daycare.
All right.
So, and my, my thinking of this, and I talked to Bob about this, other folks, back in the day, you know, on Porridge Road, we had three daycares, and they had three to five children per daycare that was there. Everybody operated in there, everybody was happy, and it was like, you know, family kind of thing. Now, all of a sudden, they're going away, because the state came in and said you had to have that, this, the county said you had to have this, you had to have all this other stuff. So we've got major daycare problems, not only in Hatteras Island.
All over.
It's all over the place, and it's not going to get any better, because the fact, those folks that operate in the large daycares can't make any money. And they're not going to do it for nothing.
Right.
So we even have to revert back to how we used to be, and allow those people, and give them the opportunity to make a living at the smaller daycare level, and hopefully that can maybe alleviate some problems. Or even that, if we support them, and we can't support every daycare in Dare County.
Again, I, we can do whatever you all want, so I don't, the amount of times that daycare has asked for the fee, the, the revenue part of it is insignificant, so it's just a matter of whatever you think is best.
Do, do, do they have to allow, like, so they can, is that the, the ten, the number ten, is that coming from the state, or is that, the state says you can?
That's the statute.
How are they being, so how is, are they being inspected or regulated or anything like that?
Don't know the answer. They just basically, what, what my information says is that the state changed the rules to allow for ten in a residential setting if, if adopted through a local text amendment. The county ordinance currently limits the definition to eight, with no more than five of the eight children being preschool age. So they're asking to change the eight to ten.
I need to think about that more.
Yeah, you know, if, if that, if.
I'm not a.
Well, they haven't made the application yet. This is, the request is just for the fee.
I don't have any problem.
I don't mind reducing the fee.
Yeah, I don't mind reducing the fee either, but the change to the ordinance, I'd like more time to.
Yeah, but they, they haven't applied yet, so I don't know what to say.
Yeah, Sheila.
Just related to your, to your question, if you're worried about the numbers, being a licensed childcare center, then they are going to be required to be monitored for quality, and there's metrics that they have to meet that does fall under smart start and the part of Children's Partnership to do that quality management piece.
So they would be inspected?
Because they're licensed, they would be. They'd have to be.
Yeah, I would certainly.
But they don't be allowed to be ins, their license would allow them to have that many kids in their home?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
They would be legally able to operate.
Okay.
So nothing changes, except the number goes to ten, and our ordinance says eight.
Move to reduce fee to fifty dollars for child, pre-K.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman inside.
Just try to help where I can.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Um, I put a tax map in front of each one of you. The red lot there, we own all the land. If you, if you hold it up like this, and you see Sea Haven Drive across the top, we own the land that touches the, the bottom part, the south side, if you will, of Sea Haven Drive. We own this lot here. There's a flag lot right here, and then there's a little strip that goes out to Highway twelve.
Where is this?
Sea Haven Drive's in Redanthie. It's, it's just north of.
We own the red lot.
We, and we, well, we own the red lot. We own the flag lot that's right adjoining to it, and we own the.
And the strip.
The strip. This is property that someone subdivided and had wetlands, and basically said, I can't develop it. It's got too many wetlands, and I'm out, and, and abandon it to us. And that's how we got it. So the fellow that owns this first house right here in Redanthie, he wants to buy this lot from us, and he wants to move his house onto that lot, and wanted to know would we sell it. And he also, I tried to get him to buy all of our property there, just get rid of all of it, so we're out. We, we don't have any use for it there. The flag lot, he, he says doesn't have any value. Hosey and his folks walk it. They said it's a buildable lot. It's worth ninety thousand dollars. The guy didn't want to buy it. He is willing to buy the little flag down here by the road. That's about, has a tax value of about three thousand or six thousand dollars. So he's.
I'm, I'm hearing you. I'm not.
I'm not, I'm not either. I'm not following either.
But look, the red lot, then there's a lot that joins, it starts at the canal. If you look, it looks, it's got a.
Is that the L-shaped?
The L-shaped one. I call it a flag, but yeah, that's the L-shaped lot.
And all three lots have road in front of it, don't see.
Yeah, and then the little, there's a line, and there's a little narrow strip about halfway down that goes out to the road. That's the strip lot.
Sorry, two people talking.
Sorry.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
The last part, something.
All right, so if you look at the L-shaped lot, it, it narrows down, and then it has a little teeny line where the terminus is.
Yeah. He wants to buy which one?
And, and then you'd start from that line, and then go to the road. There's another little strip lot.
Yeah.
He wants to buy the big lot in red, and the strip lot down by the road, which is kind of irrelevant to me. That, that's not a buildable lot. The only reason he's offering that is because I asked him to try to buy the whole thing and take us out of this property, and so we didn't have to mess with it.
Well, that don't make sense.
Doesn't make sense. So, but it's, it's, it's a six thousand dollar strip. It didn't, he didn't care whether he bought it or he didn't buy it.
How much is?
How much are we asking for the red?
Hundred eighty-six thousand, so a hundred and eighty for the, this lot, and six for the little strip. That's the tax value, so we figured that was the closest to the value.
Hundred and eighty and six.
No, six and a hundred and eighty.
Yes.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you said a hundred and eighty-six. My son.
I'm teasing.
Yeah, so the total.
I love these discussions.
This is what happens at the end of meetings.
I have to remember all of the maps and locations, so that it's easy for me to talk about myself.
So.
Jesus.
I mean, what would we need that piece of property for?
We don't.
Sell it, you know?
Um, so what, here's, there's a process we have to go through if you all are prepared, and I'm trying to help expedite it, so he can move his house before it goes in. Normally, we would come to you with a, a resolution and do a bunch of other things well in advance of this meeting, but I just got this Friday, so we didn't have time to do that. So what I'm asking you all for is two or three things. One is to agree that you're prepared to sell it at that price. Two, authorize me to sign a contract to sell at that price. Three, authorize us to do whatever resolutions we need to do and sign those. And, and then four, authorize us to publish whatever we need to publish. I'm hoping I can do all this ahead of our next meeting, so that we can get it done and don't have to wait a whole thirty days. I don't know if we can get through it. I don't know if the statute lets us, but if it does, we'll expedite it. If not, you may see this for some more approvals at the next meeting. But that's what I'm looking for, to try to move this as fast as I can.
So he owns that house at the very point of that red?
Yeah.
Neighbor just south of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make that motion, Bobby.
Yeah.
With a one, two, four. That's my second.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. It's been seconded by Commissioner Burris. Floor is open for discussion.
Have we heard anything from the guy on the other side of him?
I didn't ask him.
He's off the property.
They approached us, I mean, they.
I mean, what's the significance of that?
Well, I'm looking at the lot. Is it subdivided? Should we sell half of it for ninety to die one and get the other house off the beach?
I think, well, just from looking at the map, this is typically wetland, and this highland is just.
There's a lot of wetland on that lot.
Bobby said, you can't get but one house in there, from what I, what I'm hearing.
That, that, that's how it was subdivided. Craig, this is a subdivided tract, and that's how it was subdivided.
Okay. Let me just finish my last thought there. You referred to it as a flag lot.
That's the piece adjacent to it, the L-shaped.
We will sell the red block. We will sell the little tiny strip going out to Iowa twelve, and we will retain ownership of this.
L-shaped.
The L-shaped.
Wetland.
Correct.
Well, we'll also retain ownership of the very front lot, right?
No, there's only three parcels there.
One and two.
From the ditch to the oceanfront.
He's getting that other little.
Well, yes, yes, the answer is.
No, no, uh-uh. There's a L-shaped lot, then there's another strip, and then there's another strip. There's a line drawing through there.
We only own one strip.
Well, there's a.
The strip is just adjacent to the road.
Well, there's a line in there that makes me believe it's, it's a third piece of property.
And plus.
If you say it is, if you, one, two, three.
One.
No.
Yes.
No, one, two, three, four. There's a line right here that makes me believe it's another, I mean, you're telling me otherwise. I'm just seeing.
Let me look and see. I don't know what you're talking about.
There's three flags.
Yeah, but we just own the first one, the one that's adjacent to the road.
He's not referencing the three flags.
I'm not referencing the three flags.
And we own whatever's left on the ocean.
Come over here. I'll show you the land.
You sure you want to get involved in this government stuff?
There is a line right here between this, this strip, this strip right here, all the way there. There's a line right there that makes me believe.
This is what happens when you see to the end of meetings.
That's a printing error. There's only one strip there.
Well, and then you should have told me that. It's a printing error. It's all right. I pointed it out to you and proved you wrong.
Boys, boys, boys.
I guess my concern for this, for, did these other property owners realize that was available, and they just, like, I, I don't know, I just.
They could have done the research like the one fellow.
I mean, I get that, but.
You can't put two houses on there.
I don't know what the significance of moving the one is. Where are you going to put it?
Right here. I guess, I guess as far east as he can.
He goes back, yeah.
As far east as he can.
I'm going to tell you on that map, when you're looking at those GIS, go on there sometime and put your finger on there. Five hundred feet, it's not a long ways on that map.
Yeah.
It's a very small little.
Right, yeah.
So you think it's not much of a difference, but it could be a thousand feet.
When we sell it, our contract, we make, it's whereas, however it is, no warranties, no nothing, no representations about anything. They're, we're just, they got to do their own due diligence.
Well, let me ask you this. Is it worth having our folks look at that red piece of property and see if it is subdivided and, and can be a house built on each of the pieces subdivided?
I, I cannot.
So that, so that if that, if that person south of the one that's wanting to buy wants to move their property.
I, I could have, I'll tell you that what I would think is, this property was subdivided. As you look at your map, it has the pieces. We've talked about it. It has this piece, and then it has four oceanfront, what used to be buildable oceanfront parcels on the oceanfront. See those lines that go out into the ocean?
Yes.
So a subdivision, a developer came in and subdivided this property to get as many buildable lots as he could, and the only way he could make this lot buildable was to do, if he could have gotten more lots, he would have done more lots.
Right.
Then, I'm guessing. I mean, I can have it evaluated, but that, that would be the likely scenario.
My question, Mr. Drew Rousen.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not pushing that.
Yeah.
You're going to go get two septics for two separate smaller lots that close to the ocean?
So.
That close together?
Right. I yield to the pleasure of the board.
I don't care if we said it. We didn't.
Did we have a? And we had a motion for the one.
We had a motion and a second.
Who did that?
Oh, that's right. We did. We, we had.
So we just need to vote.
We had a, a motion and a second.
That's correct. Sorry. All right. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right. I have two cleanups. One, we have a, a software agreement that you all approved. It's with the University of Utah at your last meeting. They've sent it back. They've added some identification numbers and some paragraph rem numbering, but they've changed nothing on it substantively. And they've asked us to re-sign it, and since it's not exactly the same as what you approved, I'm asking you to approve it with those identification numbers changed, and allow me to sign it.
It just doesn't change anything. It's just an edit?
Didn't change anything.
Most to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then finally, I have one of our favorite kind of contracts, one that's non-negotiable. We either accept it or we don't. This is with Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's a data-sharing memorandum of agreement where we share data with them, they share data with us, and it has all the privacy things in it. For our protection, if you will, there's a thirty-day out, so we can cancel it anytime we want. We're not locked into it forever. But it does have some things we wouldn't normally agree to, like the venue for any disputes is in Wake County and things like that, that we typically wouldn't agree to in a contract. But if we want to do this, we've got to do it this way, and we really don't have any choice, because we need to share the data with Blue Cross Blue Shield as one of our providers. And so it's a multi-year contract, so I need your authority to sign it.
Sounds like we ain't got much of a choice.
You're right.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, you need a closed session whenever the appropriate time is on.
Yes, sir. Public Information Officer Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Nothing at all? Not even the green light?
Well, you already did the green light. That was on my list of things to do, and if, if, I would say if anyone has a, shines a green light to send that photo, or send a photo to us at Dare County PR, at darenc.gov, because Caitlin's going to be presenting at the veterans luncheon at the Dare County Center, and so many of our veterans might not get out.
What's the date of that?
I'd have to let you know.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's Monday, Dorothy.
Yeah, send, send us that, if you will.
I'm pretty sure it's Monday.
Yeah, I don't have the date, but she's going to share some of the photos that are submitted, so the veterans in attendance can see those, because, you know, a lot of them are not going to be out all over the county in the evening seeing the green light. So that's something I'll add to the operation green light.
Okay.
And I will follow up and let you know the date of that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's got to be Monday. All, all offices are closed Tuesday, so it's got to be Monday. That's what I have on my calendar.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Finance Director, Matt, you got anything for us?
Yeah, so we're navigating the release of, with the FAA for the public works property, and so we're delaying our issuance from November nineteenth, tentatively to the first week of December. We're not anticipating a material impact to the timeline or the cost of financing as a result, so.
Thank you, sir.
Just on that issue, Mr. Chairman, of course, the shutdown is complicating things, and there's nobody at the FAA. Dustin's been, he had a contact that he was talking to, and now he doesn't. And then on top of that, the person that he dealt with at the state aviation, who was helping him try to get through to the FAA, has now been moved out of that position. They got a new position there, somebody that isn't there. Now, they've asked us for more information that we've already given them, and so it's getting to be complicated, because of all the changes and all the shutdown. We're trying to get them, whoever them is, on a conference call, so we can sort of take them through everything that they have. I mean, we're talking about replacing something on that property that's replacing something on that property that's been there since like 1972. You wouldn't think that we would be going through this where they're wanting to see, you know, the deeds and the what are the, all the authorities, and all those details that have been there for a property that's been there over 50 years, so. Nonetheless, that's what we're up against, and so I don't know what's gonna happen, and I think the longer we're shut down, the, the more complicated it's gonna get, so just be aware.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of bids, what, what are we bidding to nourishment for Buxton and Avon in January?
I think, I think it's sooner.
It's sooner?
Sooner, but I don't remember if it's November or December.
But it's, it's on the radar to rock and roll.
It, it is, I, I was with our consultants on Friday, and I told them everything they had to do to expedite everything, because as soon as the weather got good, we wanted them guys out there pumping sand and, and repairing groins.
And one other, one other issue, the business bureau has the event site on their plans in December meeting for the, for the the sport that you hit a plastic ball with.
I'm looking at the key word in public, I'm not doing it.
I didn't either, so that's on there.
That's on there, that's on their December agenda.
All right, cool. Is that it, Matt? All right, thank you, folks. That brings us to Commissioner's business, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Burris if he would kick it off.
Yes, sir, thank you. I would like to first wish a very happy birthday to Ms. Goodlove Murphy. Eighty years young. I would also like to say, we do have Veterans Day coming up, and I would like to thank all the people who have served this great nation and afforded us the freedoms and liberties we have. It's, it's no small effort, and I, I appreciate everyone who has put their name on that dotted line and went out there and defended our freedoms and their service to this great nation. I look forward to this month, this brings in the, the time of year that I love the most. I come from a large family, and this is a very big family time of year with Thanksgiving leading into Christmas and New Year, so. I know there will be a lot of, of agenda items, a lot of people inviting us to a lot of different meetings and get togethers, and I, I really look forward to getting out and being a, a part of everything that I can be in the coming months, because this is a, a time of year which I absolutely love and look forward to, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it. Commissioner Balance?
So, I also want to extend a happy birthday to Mary Helen, who has been taking pictures of my son in a Red Ryder wagon since he was born. Every year at the parade, which is coming up on December 13th. Not sure he'll be in a wagon this year, he is 25 now. But.
He'll be pulling.
He'll be pulling. But thank you for all that, you, thank you for all you've done over your 80 years young to, to be supportive of and inclusive of govern, our government as well as Hatteras Island and all of the things, you're everywhere. I don't know how you get, where you get, but you're everywhere. We did go to a, I did attend a housing meeting for the UNC School of Government this, this past couple weeks. The Dare Housing Foundation nonprofit, I signed the papers to be a part of that board last week, so we are moving forward. We have meetings coming up in the next two weeks to get, get that, hit the ground running on that, and I'm really excited about that. November 7th for veterans, again, my father was a, is a veteran, and I, my father-in-law and my soon-to-be daughter-in-law's parents both. And so, November 7th, Cape Hatteras Secondary School, they do an annual celebration, veteran celebration, and if you guys have an opportunity to come down, they do, they invite all the veterans of Hatteras, on Hatteras to come for breakfast, and they all eat breakfast in the cafeteria, and then they go down and do a ceremony with the whole school, it's a really moving, wonderful event. Had the pleasure of attending the Dare Art Celebration with, saw Mike there, and the Cancer Shucks this last weekend, it was a great event. A lot of fun, I even got my husband out, so yes, he does exist, I know not many of you guys have met him, but he's there. And he's, he's.
Is that true?
Yes, he was there. I'm not gonna talk about Buxton, I think I said all I had to say in the last comments, everybody knows where I stand on that, and I appreciate everybody here's support and reaching out when things, when those events were going out, y'all checking on me, texts from Irvin, and you guys, it means a lot. Thank you. And I'm gonna close with what, something that the Reverend said, he talked about, you know, in his opening prayer about free will and personal choices and our best choice available, and I offer that kindness as always the best choice available. That is all.
Thank you, Commissioner, well said. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, sir, I will be brief. On the 25th, we had a terrific Dare to Scare Fun Run event at the Tillot Center. I was there dressed as one of the Pittsburgh Steelers. Runners, there was a lot of candy given, and it appeared to be a very, very successful event, so. Shout out to Laura Lewis and her team and the entire committee, the Dare to Scare event was great. Obviously, I'm virtually 99% sure the Veterans Day lunch is Monday at noon at the Tillot Center, Monday the 10th. We also had a very successful, I just checked with Amy Montgomery earlier, the Cancer Shucks sort of dinner dance auction fundraiser raised about $80,000, she told me, for the OBX Cancer Center and to continue to provide services so critically needed for those dealing with and fighting through their battles with cancer. Mary Helen, I know the secret, you have superpowers, that's how you do it. None of this chemicals or anything else, you were just born with superpowers. So I've answered the question, case closed, full stop. And lastly, on a sad note, the Nags Head Golf Links commi, community, rather, so lost a, a very dear friend, and, and a dear friend of mine. Young guy, just turned 60, Tim Schisler, and I wanted to send my sympathies and condolences to his family and all of his friends. He was a part of our tournament team on Friday against the North Currituck Club, we were at the club Friday night having dinner and bemoaning the fact that we had gotten whipped pretty good on Friday, but by God, Saturday was gonna be revenge. And an hour after he left the club, he suffered a massive cardiac event and passed away. And it was, it stunned us all, so.
Yeah.
Rest in peace, Tim, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. Once again, I join the rest of my fellow commissioners. Mary Helen, happy birthday. You have been a guiding light for all of us here. And we look forward to every time we have a conversation with you, because you do treat us fairly. And we cannot thank you enough for that, and cannot thank you enough for the service you provide, not only for Hatteras Island, but for all of Dare County. And from my heart, happy birthday. As I said, we have Veterans Day coming up, I want to thank all of our veterans. And coming from a long family of veterans, from myself and also from my wife, we also recognize the that a lot of times, our veterans get a lot of thanks, but the families they have behind also suffer and sacrifice in the same ways. So I would also like to thank our veterans' families on this Veteran Day as well. We've got a few things coming up in our fisheries. One thing that they just put out, the North County Division of Marine Fisheries on Tuesday, November 4th, they will be reviewing documents provided for the Marine Fisheries and changes to the Sheephead Management. And prompted by request from three separate meetings in the Marine Fisheries Commission, member Tom Roller cited concerns of the current recreational limit is too high. So they will have a meeting on the Sheephead and also coming up on Wednesday, November 5th, 6:00 PM at the Washington Civic Center in Washington, North Carolina. They will be having a Strike Bass informational meeting. And that will be presented for the Strike Bass Amendment 2 informational page, the Strike Bass decision document, and analysis of the News and Pamlico Rivers, and then Strike Bass data. And so that will be coming up too. They'll have an online meeting tonight at 6 o'clock. Also, to address the, the Seabass webinars. So like I said, that just came out, actually this morning, so. Also, uh, coming up very shortly, December 1st, is a due harvest reporting requirement will impact recreational and commercial fishermen. The state law will now require any person who has recreationally harvested a red drum, flounder, spotted sea trout, striped bass, or weakfish to report that harvest to the North County Division of Marine Fisheries.
Wait, one fish?
Even if you catch one of those fish, yes.
Rec or commercial, any fish, if it's one of them species.
Yep. And you're, as, as, as as a recreational fisherman, this is the first time they're asking you ma, making mandatory that you report your catch.
Mary Helen, this has got to stop, we need the power of the press here.
This applies to the coastal fisheries waters, joint fishery waters, and inland fishery waters adjacent to the coastal and joint fishing waters. So basically, if you catch any of these fish, you've got to report it, and it's an online thing. Additionally, it requires anyone holding a commercial fishing license who is engaged in a commercial fishing operation to report all fish harvested to DMF regardless of sale. So it goes even beyond your trip tickets.
And here is the attempt to take data and manipulate it even more, because why, so now a commercial fisherman has to report it twice, they have to report it when they get it to the dock from the fish house, and they have to report it themselves.
I, I think only if you harvest it, not release, so it's, the way it was told to me by Chris Lee, because I asked specifically about my nets.
You, you have to land the fish.
Uh, yeah, you gotta land them, so everything else still goes on just the trip tickets, like when you take it to the fish house. It really, the main thing is the recreational side, they're gonna have to report every fish they harvest now.
And you go online.
Yeah, just like the Wildlife Outdoors app for hunting deer tags now is online, the same, similar situation.
Yep.
So if I'm, if I'm surf casting at the inlet, and I catch one of them bad boys, I gotta report it.
If you catch and take it home, yes, you have to report it.
That's what I'm saying, if I catch it, take it home.
Yep.
What's the timeline?
Uh, looking at the law, I think it gives you three, five days? I'm not exactly sure.
They don't.
They don't.
Yeah, that, that's. That's where they're not gonna have accurate recording, because I mean, I look at all those online forums, almost every person on there says, well, I ain't reporting nothing, that, that screwed the government, you know, same old, same old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it, it's out there, it's something that, uh, over the years, you know, a lot of the commercial fishermen are saying, well, recreation doesn't have to report their catch, and you're using this astronomical algorithm to figure out, because they have less than 1% of commercial fishermen reporting their catch of, of recreational fishermen catch. So then they calculate that by some algorithm and multiply that by 100, and that's what, what they've been using to calculate recreational catch, which we all know is not the way to do that, it doesn't come out right. So this was one of the things that a lot of people have been asking about, recreational needs to, needs to start being responsible and calculating their catches, and this is how DMF has now come out with how they can do that. But like I said, if I'm on the back of my dock, and I don't see a not that I would do this, but if I was on the back of my dock and fishing, and I caught one of these things, and there's no resource officer around, what's my obligation to report it? Other than, I know it's.
It's the law states.
Other than, you know, it's law, I'm not saying I would do this, I would report it, but I'm saying of the general.
No, they ain't gonna.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not gonna. Gonna be totally inaccurate, like everything else they got.
Yeah, so big thing that's coming up at their next meeting and a little bit later on this week, not this week, but this month, is blue crab. And blue crab has been a kind of a hot topic. The Marine Fisheries Commission has now kicked this down the road. They were originally supposed to vote on this thing back in April, I think it was. And then they kicked it to one other meeting, now they've kicked it to the November meeting. So that's coming up. And they're not gonna kick it anymore, it's gonna be either discussed at this next meeting and done something with. If you want to know information on, on the blue crab, there's the pamphlet. Whole bunch of it. A lot of things have been discussed, not only with the blue crab industry, but also members of the commission. And you have two members on the commission that are blue crab fishermen, and they brought up some very valid points, and they're trying to get some things changed as well. One of the things that the, the really alarming part in this is the first time I've actually heard a majority of the Marine Fisheries Division say the same thing. Exactly. We're trying to pass fishery management plans on data that is not up to date.
We're trying to pass.
Fishery management plans that they do not have up-to-date data on.
Okay. Everybody understands how absurd that statement is for everyone to hear by those in authority to pass and approve such plans.
Correct.
Okay.
The stock assessment they're currently working with on the blue crab was done in 2018. There have been some stock assessments since then, but they've just been preliminary stock assessments, not a, not a full in-depth stock assessment. They are, however, working on an in-depth blue crab stock assessment as we speak now. But those, uh, uh, those findings will not be published until 2026, when that stock assessment is complete. The current amendment to the blue crab, by state law, it has to have a when they do this, it has to meet a certain criteria within a timeframe. From what they're seeing with landings is that they're not gonna meet that reduction that they were looking for. So that's why they've implemented this new change to try to meet that reduction. Now, one of the things is, even in the, the assessment for the blue crab, you notice a line that goes like this for participants in the crabbing. Less crabbers from numerous years coming down to now. You've also number, it goes a parallel, here's your crabbers, here's your crab landing. Those two lines go parallel. So what does that mean? Does it mean there's less blue crab out there? Or is there less people fishing for the blue crab? All the stocks, that's, all the fisheries guys out there doing crabbing say it's, it's coalition because you have less effort, you're catching less crab. There's still crab out there, they see crab all the time. One of the things also they brought up was to do a stock assessment on the blue crab, they do some pots, but their main focus on how they catch the crab and count them is through trawling. Nobody trawls for crabs.
You say you don't trawl for crab.
And so those numbers, and they asked them about the trawling, and they say, well, they use the exact same net size, exact same speed, in the exact same spots, they always do the same testing. As you know, the crabs, they move. And they don't stay in one area. Also, another thing that they, the biologists did not come up with in their data. Also, another thing that they, the biologists did not uh, come up with in their data. Was uh, water conditions. They did not sample for toxicity, did not calculate for tur- occurrence, did not calculate for salinity. Did not calculate for temperatures and also did not have hypoxia data. All of those coincide with where your crab are and whether or not. So, um, also, uh, I, I know you've heard me say this several times. And I'm gonna say it again because this was actually brought up. By one of the uh, members on the uh, North County Division of Marine Fisheries Commission. He asked point blank. Several meetings ago and brought it back up in the last meeting as well. To have their biologist to ride with him on a boat to show him the fishery. They have refused to do that. So with that, um, they are requesting. A possible five-month closure of the fishery. And they're also looking at a handle or ten bushel limit of the fishery. In both cases, that would devastate our blue crab fishermen. So we have put this uh, I've put this resolution together with the help of uh, our public information officer and her staff. And uh, I would like to make a, make a motion that we adopt this and county manager, can I get you to read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution in opposition to proposed blue craft crab harvest restrictions. Whereas in December 1998, a fishery management plan for blue crab was adopted. And since that time, three amendments and two revisions have been made to the plan. And whereas a comprehensive internal review of the North Carolina Blue Crab Management Plan was performed in 2023. And whereas the most recent compiled biomass stock assessment was completed in 2018. And the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries has advised it is currently working on a new blue crab stock assessment, which is due in 2026. And whereas biomass stock assessment of the blue crab was calculated by trawling and blue clabs are caught more productively by pot fishery. And whereas many of our crabbers have invited NC DMF biologists to ride along and observe the fishery as they are working. However, the NC DMF has refused to entertain this concept of fishery management data collections. And whereas the blue crab fishery is complex and involves a variety of factors. Such as market fluctuations, weather, water conditions, toxicity, salinity, currents, tides, and epoxy. None of which are mentioned in the current report's observations from the NC DMF biologist. And whereas trip ticket factors are pronounced in the adaptive management plan and show a parallel effect of less effort by the crabbers. And these result of less landings of blue crabs. And whereas a proposed five-month closure of the fishery and or a ten bushel limit would have surmountable economic impact across the fishery. Affecting our local communities. And whereas all of the NC DMF advisory committees recommend the status quo of the blue crab fishery with no further restrictions. Therefore, be it resolved that Dare County Board of Commissioners strongly opposes any further restrictions to the blue crab fishery. Until the 2026 stock assessment is completed, as well as a new comprehensive plan for collecting data of the fishery. This is the third day of November 2025.
Like I said, I have a motion to uh, adopt that resolution.
I will second it.
Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Crete. Any further discussion?
Are you gonna take that to the coalition?
I haven't finished yet. Um, any, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I pose like saying, motion carries unanimous and yes, ma'am. We have a meeting Wednesday the 5th and we will be taking this resolution to the coalition for their approval. There are several other counties that have already passed this similar pro- uh, uh, proposal, resolution, excuse me. Sorry.
Go ahead. Um, I appreciate everybody's support, support on that. Um, the only further thing that I have is we're approaching the holiday seasons. And please uh, be responsible, be safe. And we look forward to going through uh, Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Years uh, in the upcoming days and weeks. And uh, thank you all uh, from Dare County. I, I'm personally thankful. Uh, for every citizen in this county who has supported me over the years. And I appreciate that and I can't thank you enough for that. And uh, with that being said, Merry Christmas to all and Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. So um, I had the opportunity to go down to um, visit with the Merlot Beach Civic Association. On Saturday and um, great group of folks down there concerned about their beach, their homes. Um, these guys have taken a pretty proactive stance. They've um. Through their homeowner dues, they paid for a, a, a fee to do a study. Exactly on stormwater management, how to maybe regulate some of the water that's coming out of the ocean. Uh, maybe realign some streets. Um, the total for what they're probably looking at is two, two to $300,000. That their homeowners association will be responsible for. Um, the only ask they had of me. Um, was the fact that if we could get DOT to just look at Highway 12. That runs, when you hit the circle, runs to the north. If DOT could um, create ditches on the east and the west side of Highway 12. In order to, some of the water that comes in there would have a place to go and maybe it could be drained off their property. Um, very, very, very nice folks, very cordial, um, had a great meeting with them. Um, so anyway, and just Bobby, if you could check in that for me and kind of let me know what they, what you find out. Um, the other, I, I also went to Buxton uh, at the same time and, and of course they got a mess down there. On the same, in that same area down there while I was there, I had a chance to meet with a family. I don't know if you guys remember, but more than a year ago, I brought a resolution, not a resolution, but a issue with kratom to you guys. And we asked to have a standalone bill to go to the House and go to the Senate and hopefully it would pass. And to get kratom um, regulated for the um. Unadulterated and then the adulterated kratom to be banned in Dare County. I talked to Bobby Haney this morning, that bill is gone. It's, it's not gonna go anywhere. Um, talked to Keith Kidwell about a month ago and he says the same thing, it's not gonna go anywhere in the House. So they're not gonna do anything about this at all. In the meantime, while I was down there and Buxton, I visited with the family in Avon. Um, their son was there. Um, he is on a new intense quality of kratom called 708. I think that uh, we talked about this at the Health and Human Services, I think I brought this to your attention. It's 40 to 50 times more potent than what their um, regular kratom is. This guy was a shell of a person. Um, I could hardly have a conversation with him. The family's devastated. It's not gonna get any better. What I would like to do is possibly have. Some kind of vehicle so we could do a, maybe have Sheila, myself, um, maybe the county manager, Bob. And maybe Jeff Derringer to sit down there and look at it and see if we could get a bill just for Dare County. So Dare County can ban the adulterated kratom. But the adulterated to allow that to be, still be used in Dare County. And see if it's enforceable, let Jeff look at it and say, you know, this is what we can or what we cannot do. Um, I need you guys' support on this though because.
I love the idea, but I'll drive 10 minutes to Currituck County and buy it and then I'll drive back.
And that's fine. We gotta start somewhere. Maybe Currituck County, they, they, they're doing some, some very good things with their saving lives task force over there. Or their equivalent to that and with Drug Court, maybe they can follow suit.
Did you have any conversation with. Haney or Kidwell or, or Goodwin about a single bill?
Single bill, they stuck it into a bill without trying to legalize marijuana. You know where that's gonna go? Nowhere.
Right.
And so this, this is, this is something that it's not gonna go anywhere unless we do something in Dare County. I had a conversation this morning with Sheila about it and she suggested maybe having a, a group to sit down and look at it and say, hey, this is maybe what we can do. Um, and her question, which is very legitimate, is it enforceable? Well, if we get it out of the stores and Billy Bob goes to the get-go and it's not there for him. Yeah, maybe he's gotta drive to Currituck. You know, let him drive to Currituck, I don't care. I just don't want it in Dare County.
Right. Yeah, I, I mean, I'd, I'd support that. I mean, bad stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so um, Bobby, I guess I'm.
You don't need a motion to do that. We can have a consensus.
Um, yes, because if we're gonna go ask the legislature through whomever for a local bill, they need to know that our board voted for that because it's. Oh, sorry, that's what I thought.
He's asking for a group together. And then if the, then if the group.
I thought he was saying, let me and him and Sheila.
Well, listen, I'd like to go and begin to start doing it, then I can figure out how to do it once we do it. If you want, someone wants to make a motion, I'll be glad to second it.
No, if you're not moving forward with the, the local bill, I don't need a motion for that. I thought you were gonna have this group and then go forward with the local bills.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just get a consensus to have this group together and discuss it and then come back.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna get with Sheila and Jeff and uh, maybe Bobby to sit and talk.
I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, so that if we come back in De- in December.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, the other thing, uh, the um, at Dare to scare, we had 200. You noticed all the little kids over there running? Go for our kids. Did you see them? Oh, yeah. Um, great organization. Um, thank you very much to the coaches. Thank you very much to the organizers. That's a great way to start running and, and building self-confidence at a very, very young age. They have some fast kids out there. Unfortunately, I was one of the coaches, but I was not there for the last uh, two training sessions or the race itself. I was out of town. But uh, they did a great job and I'm really proud of each one of those individuals. That was fantastic. And Mary Helen, um, happy birthday. Uh, Mary Ellen called me this weekend and asked me about something else and during the conversation, I almost let the cat out of the bag.
Good one, Mary.
I know. But anyway, I didn't, I didn't say anything at all. I know, but I got, I got ready to say, oh, yeah, and then congratulations on the, the, the.
Now I know who we can trust.
But I didn't do that, but listen, happy birthday and you, you do such a great job for everybody in Dare County and, and um. I've never had a conversation with her that um, didn't turn out, although sometimes they were intense. I never had one that turned out bad, so that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Crete?
Yeah, wish Ms. Mary a happy birthday as well. Yep, always a pleasure. Uh, another thing is I actually looked into it while I was up here. There is a program, North Carolina Hunters for the Hungry, where you can donate whole carcass deer to a processor that is inspected by the Department of Agriculture. And then they distribute it to food pantries. Uh, I know none of our food pantries here have that, so I'm gonna look into that personally and see if we can get some, get. A cooler moved here where we can start doing that. Uh, another thing is the uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners gave us this uh, very informative booklet here and uh. I highlighted this GDP growth. Uh, this pretty much just shows by county, domestic product and what the value is. Where the dark green is in our major cities, you can see those are very, very uh. I don't know what the word to say is, but they make more money than all of our rural counties here. You see the pale yellow, all of eastern North Carolina? What that pretty much establishes is that we are the poorest portion of North Carolina. There is. Product, domestic product. Our farming industry and our fishing industry in eastern North Carolina has supported our rural families here dating back to the pre-revolution. Obviously, the first families that were in America landed in eastern North Carolina and eastern Virginia and up and down the east coast. The families that settled here did brave the wilderness. I know it's Veterans Day, we support all of our veterans. My family dates back to when they fought for the king against the French. Then fought against the king in the revolution and fought against the country in the 1860s. What do we have to show for it? The poorest region of North Carolina. It disgusts me that at the state level, we can't support small business and our fishermen and our farmers. I have numerous farmers come to me and say, I don't know how we're gonna make it. The price of everything keeps going up and the price of our product keeps going down. Why in North Carolina do we support foreign products over North Carolina raised products? Why do we alienate the oldest families, traditions and heritage that built this state? Why can we not provide some kind of relief to our farmers and fishermen in eastern North Carolina? I have to commend President Trump. Nobody ever plays the real news anymore, but when he negotiated that trade deal with China recently. He secured a deal that China would buy 12 million metric tons of soybeans this year. And 25 million metric tons for the next three years, 26, 27 and 28. That, that drastically, just him doing that deal the other day drastically improved the prices of soybeans in eastern North Carolina. And actually saved a large portion of our farmers here that were going to lose money on their crops. Why is the federal government releasing restrictions on our fisheries? Trump has sent the Secretary of Commerce to deregulate the commercial fishing industry in our waters outside of the three-mile marker. Why does our state refuse to follow suit like many other states in the southeastern portion of the country are doing? Instead, we have a Marine Fisheries Board that now seeks to destroy our crabbing industry next, at the end of this month. Which is one of the last fairly leniently regulated fisheries we have left. It is also one of the most expensive commercial fisheries to get into. A pot on average costs around $50. You need about 800 to 1600 of those pots to operate. You're looking at 60, $70,000 investments in pots alone. Not counting your boats, motors, gear, transportation and everything else. If laws are put in place, not laws should I say, proclamations are put in place like a king that would. Then relegate our crabbing industry to little to nothing. What are these fishermen supposed to do who don't have college education? They've poured their entire lives investing into their craft and into their product. Do, they got $70,000 worth of pots that are worthless now. Their boats, their motors, worthless. Everything that they have. By the result of one proclamation can ruin their entire lives. It is a disgusting thing that we've done in the state of North Carolina where we have alienated. Some of the oldest families that really built this country. And uh, hopefully our legislators in Raleigh can advance new legislation. To either remove commercial fishing out of marine fisheries. And I know that Bob and our uh, new alliance there is working on that. With our, some of our legislators from eastern North Carolina and they're doing a fantastic job, by the way. I just can't see why. Why are we so, why are we just destroying eastern North Carolina? We're destroying it. There's a map right there. Look at how poor it is compared to the central part of the state. It's disgusting. And uh. Do better, you know? This is shameful. It's shameful that all these counties, bottom five, bottom five counties in GDP. Jones, Gates, Camden, Hyde and Terrell, all eastern North Carolina, bottom five in the entire state. It's disgusting. So with that, I would ask our legislators to do better and to please give us some relief from the overregulation that is literally ruining our lives.
Thank you, Commissioner Crete. Will sit, will sit. Um, I'll follow up with a couple of things. Um, the feds, once again, are knocking at it possibly our door. Um, to um, open up offshore drilling again off our coast. And typically in the past for numerous years, this board has been opposed to offshore drilling. I'd like to ask the board if they would approve um, uh, another resolution. Just will modify the one that we have with a current date to in opposition to offshore drilling. And I, I'll make that in the form of a motion. Second about Commissioner Balance, the floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Hearing none, then, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for doing that. I very much appreciate it. The, as I said earlier, we have a meeting Wednesday in Carteret, our third coalition meeting. And I'll take this crab resolution to them, and then we, this other issue from the ones that Steve has presented to us about the single catch and recording, we'll have some discussions on that as well at our meeting. The, so I look forward to attending that and having another successful meeting there. Our veterans, I said that earlier, thank them and their families for their service to our country. Just a reminder that next Tuesday is Veterans Day, the 11th. And starting tomorrow, the 4th through the 11th, is green light, which shows our respect for our veterans. And just reaching out, Bobby, we got plenty of green light bulbs in county, right?
Dorothy, yes.
Good deal. Good deal. Appreciate that. So this, I have to echo Commissioner Burris's thoughts about the time of year. This is certainly truly my favorite time of year, Thanksgiving in specific, because you're with your family and friends and loved ones. And what better time to share just good fellowship with your loved ones? And I look forward to Thanksgiving. I hope everybody has a very, very happy Thanksgiving. And let me go really, real quick back to veterans. 8.3% of our population are veterans in Dare County. Anybody know what that is? 3,173 veterans in Dare County. I'm proud to be one of those 3,183. So that's a pretty good size in Dare County for veterans. And last but not least, Mary Helen, I'm just echoing my fellow commissioners' comments. This was a no-brainer for us to recognize your service to our county. You have been a true lobbyist for us in every situation possible. You've been responsible for the successful pathways and stuff on Hatteras Island. And as the vice chair said, you have, in all of my years on this board, you have been totally respectful of my position, of my comments, of my voting record. Never criticizing, always being very optimistic, and I can't thank you enough for that. And please know that we appreciate you deeply. So with that said, county manager, we need a closed session.
Yes, sir. We need a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143 through 1811A6 to review the qualifications. Competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial appointment of an individual public officer employee or a prospective public officer employee.
So a motion...
So moved.
Is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, seconded by Commissioner Ballance. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I'll be right back.
I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to the county manager.
Sure. In the closed session, the board approved the minutes in the last closed session and reviewed the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public office employee and took no other action.
All right. Thank you, county manager. That brings us to the close of our meeting today, and I need a motion to adjourn until December the first at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
The motion on the floor about a vice chairman, is there a second?
Second.
Second about Commissioner Burris and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of that motion signify with saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.